Come on, shove them all over here.
I want to take the other hearing out of order, the assessment for the MRF.
Waiting on you kiddo.
I want to like have them settle.
No, they will. They will stop till you bend your thing. They will stop.
Hit it hard.
Yeah, hit it hard.
Haven't practiced yet. Just the one time.
One time, yeah.
Good evening. Welcome to the November 12th City Council meeting at 6:30 in the chamber, in the City Hall chambers. We will now start with the prayer.
Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction, which lead our city to be strong and unified. We will continue the legacy of our founders. We will be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen.
Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem. Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Counsel Chow. Counsel Dakota.
Here.
Counsel Getchea.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
And present.
Moment of silence, Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Nathan Michael Martinez, a resident of Lowell, the son of Louis and Sandra Martinez of Chemsford. Ever since he was a little child, Nathan was the most caring, generous human being. From a very young age, he was always looking out far and taking care of those around him. He was always willing to lend a helping hand or even to let anyone use his car if they needed to. Selflessness and generosity were in his core. It suited him to sign up to take care of this country by enlisting in the Marines. He left Chemsford High School and went straight to boot camp on Paris Island. He was then deployed on two tours to the first, Iraq, and then to Afghanistan. When he returned home from his deployments, he pursued his lifelong dream of becoming a firefighter. After completion, completing the fire academy, he joined the Lowell Fire Department where he proudly served for 12 years until his passing at the young age of 38. When he wasn't working, he enjoyed camping with his family. He loved spending time telling stories and reminiscing around a campfire. He was an extremely talented, passionate drummer, playing in several different bands over the years. Nathan was also a very talented soccer player, making the varsity team all four years in high school. He had the most wonderful sense of humor and always managed to put a smile on the faces of those around him. He was the best father to his kids and uncle to his nieces and nephews. They all adored him. He was the true definition of a hero. He was a hero to his family, a hero to his country, and a hero to the city of Lowell. Those who knew him were truly blessed to have called him son, father, brother, partner, and friend. To say he will be missed is a terrible understatement. In addition to his parents, Nathan leaves his three children, who he loved more than anything else. Maya Marie Martinez, 11, Liam Ramon Martinez, 2, and Briella Elizabeth Martinez, 3 months. His girlfriend, who loved him boundlessly, Jennifer Marie Byrne. His sisters Rachel and Kristen, his brother Louis. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, coworkers, and his many friends. I also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed away since our last City Council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercier. Any others? Mr. Clerk, please talk from the chamber. May he rest in peace. Now moving on to mayor's business, section 2, 2.1, communication, remote participation on the motion to accept by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Getchea. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. This evening, we are very fortunate, very lucky, to have Julie Ohm with us tonight. Julie is a junior at the Greer Lowell Vocational Technical High School, and she's had a busy day here today. She picked a heckling meeting to attend tonight to run, and she's here to tell us a little bit about herself and her experience as the mayor for today. Julie?
Thank you all for coming here today. Thank you, council members. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, basically, everyone for letting me have that opportunity. I am, let me reintroduce myself. I'm Julie Ohm. I am a junior at Greer Lowell Technical High School in the marketing program. I just simply, the time that I've had so far as mayor today was an interesting experience and such an opportunity of a lifetime. So thank you all so much.
The best thing about Julie is she only asked me six times what the hell did you just say. So other than that, she picked it up pretty quick. So before she joins, the councilors down in the rostam, I want to offer you an official citation. Be hereby known to all that the city of Lowell, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, hereby offers a sincere congratulations to Julie Ohm, mayor of the day. Julie has shown remarkable dedication and unwavering commitment to her community and her peers. Currently a junior in the marketing program at Greer Lowell Technical High School, Julie lives in South Lowell and has already made a significant impact through her involvement in local initiatives. At the high school, she plans to attend a four-year college to pursue a degree in political science, aiming to deepen her understanding of government and public policy. Her impressive experience includes contributing to numerous city projects, working on marketing for local campaigns, and actively advocating for the importance of career and technical education within her school. Now therefore, I, Mayor Daniel P. Rourke, on behalf of the entire City Council's residents of Lowell, hereby extend our sincere congratulations and best wishes for good health and happiness to Julie. Your passion and hard work are truly inspirational, and your contributions mark the beginning of what promises to be a bright future in service and leadership within the city of Lowell, given this 12th day of November 2024. So can I just have the councilors meet in front for a picture of Julie? We go on to section 3, State Clerk, 3.1. May I tell the nonprofit organization subcommittee November 5th, City Council regular meeting, November 5th, for acceptors. Motion to accept by Counsel Dakota, seconded by Counsel Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. General Public Council start at 7:00 PM sharp this evening. Section 5, City Council motions, 5.1, Counsel Noon. Request City Manager work the Lowell Police Department to conduct a public education campaign regarding car break-ins to inform the public regarding ways to prevent them. Seconded by Counsel Janess, Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, every month, our police captain, DeMaris, and his team go out to every neighborhood. What I saw in the report, the crime report, has been consistent in term of the car break-in. I know that the captain talking about, you know, really telling people to lock their door, to not leaving any valuable out in the open, plain views and all that. I don't know if it, I know that he try. We try as police department. Maybe there's something more we can do in term of a public education campaign so that people know, so that people, you know, really be a little more responsible themselves, making sure that they're car locked and their valuables not in plain view. Just simply asking for, to do a public campaign on that.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.2, Counsel Noon. Request City Manager work the Lowell Police Department to conduct a public education campaign regarding so-called porch thieves to inform the public of ways to prevent theft of Amazon and other delivery service packages during the upcoming holiday season. Seconded by Counsel Mercier, Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Packages, even before holidays coming, my family is included, you know, package every week, you know, on the front, front door, you know, coming in. And some of the packages very expensive, iPhone, 16, and so on. So, so giving that holidays is near, you know, some of these guy is quick, you know, as soon as the package delivered at the door, they came on, they took it. And so it happened quite a bit, particularly now that the holidays are near. I'm sure you're going to see the volume of delivery grow bigger and bigger, opportunity for those, what you call pirate on the front porch. It's going to be increasing that number. So I was hoping that the public campaign on that education, maybe also the police department set up a sting operation, which I know they've done it in the past. So that certainly going to help in term of, you know, napping some of these porch chef or whatever you call it. So that's, that the reason for the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.3, Counsel Noon. Request City Manager work the Lowell Police Department to increase the number of surveillance cameras in the downtown area. Seconded by Counsel Getchea, Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is came from the neighborhood meeting downtown that we could use some more civilian camera in the downtown. And this is something that, you know, we need to do more of. I know that we've done a number of the camera, civilian camera, been at the neighborhood area, either Beasleyville, you know, the Highland areas and whatnot, but downtown, they do have some, but not enough. So maybe looking to add more to it, maybe able to help the catching, you know, some of the disorderly and stuff like that that happened in the downtown.
Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to this particular motion by Counsel Noon, we, being Counsel Belanger and myself, this is why we have some, something on the agenda tonight for the motion detective lighting to help in that respect as well because there's crime going on in the alleyways downtown. And so we thought that if we had this type of a motion, this would be helpful to kind of ward off the crime between the alleys in the downtown. Once you try sneaking around and a light goes on, you're kind of hesitant to cause any commotion or trouble. So that's what this is in conjunction with that. So these are great motions. We all need to be educated on how we can protect our property. God knows we work very hard for it. We certainly don't want to pay all this money and have it stolen off our porches or break it into alleyways into restaurants or high rises. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.4, Counsel Belanger. Request City Manager petition the state delegation for the purpose of expanding mental health services at state hospitals. Seconded by Counsel Dakota, Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, there was a time in the Commonwealth where before, before the state closed mental institutions in the 1980s, there was nearly 20 mental health facilities to assist these individuals riddled with mental health. My research comes up with approximately two at the current time, again, before closing all facilities in the 1980s. That number to serve this population is grossly inadequate. So that leaves us with not only one, but two generations of mentally ill, that many of which are unhoused and on the streets of cities such as ours, and throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country. The spirit of this motion is to have the manager, along with the hope and hope of the support of my colleagues, to sit with the delegation and urge them to push for a concerted statewide effort to open and expand mental health services for this demographic. They have lot, for too long, have been underserved and treated very badly and need the treatment they so deserve. So I am hoping, I urge my colleagues to support this motion here tonight. This is a percent, this represents a percentage of the homeless that are on our streets as we speak, who need help. And perhaps if the courts, those who are written out of the court system, not all now, but those who are, perhaps the judges will be more inclined to send them to a long-term facility where they can get the proper care they deserve. And that would help us out. The city of Lowell is always there to welcome any of those, whether you come from across the world or from another city and town. We're always there to offer help and services. Well, now we need help. So again, I would ask my colleagues to support this and have the manager sit down with the delegation and work to a resolution on this very, very important initiative. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, I was having coffee, going through the agenda, and it was actually on Counsel Belanger's motion, when I received a phone call from a constituent concerning an incident that happened at the Owl Diner, probably an hour before he called me. And I'm sure many in this room, my colleagues, and many people watching, viewing public, because now it's, it's all over social media. An incident occurred at the Owl Diner concerning three young ladies, I think they were 17 years old, that they were leaving the Owl Diner and going to the parking lot in the upper lot, and were chased by two obviously mentally ill people. They ran to their car, locked the car, those two people banging on their windows, trying to break in. In her rush, the driver fled the parking lot and got into an accident. So I thought I'd bring that up because I think it goes right in with Counsel Belanger's motion, is that, yeah, we're dealing with homeless people, but these are mentally ill people, and we need to be worried about the safety of our residents. It's paramount. Now, when Counsel Belanger says, he's asking the state delegation, well, I've been on this council for 11 months, and it seems like every other meeting, we're talking about homelessness. So to my colleagues who have been here two, three, four, 15 terms, this must be just, I don't know, frustration abound. When we talk about sending this to the state delegation, state senator, congresswoman, what are we hearing? Crickets. That's all we've heard so far, is crickets. When Governor Healy and Lieutenant Driscoll asked the city of Lowell, hey, we have 600 refugees that need a home, can we have your hotel? What do we say to them? They said, yes, we'll do our part. Do you think there'd be a little reciprocation here? When we need help, we know the Tewksbury State Hospital has room and can help some of those mentally ill patients. But no, we don't get that. So frustrated? Am I frustrated? No, I'm not frustrated. I'm pissed off. I want something done. I'm sorry, I'm a junior, I understand I'm the junior counsel here, but I've heard enough. We need something done. We need the help from the state delegation, the governor of the state of Massachusetts, and get something done. Luckily, those kids got, got out of harm's way. But next time, we may, those, some other kids may not be so fortunate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Mercier and Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with everything that Counsel Dakota has said, and I am a senior counselor, and I remember it as if it were yesterday, when Richard Howe, senior, was the mayor of the city of Lowell, and Bud Caulfield, myself, and the mayor, Howe, went to the Department of Mental Health in Boston, because we had heard rumors that they were going to close Solomon Mental Health, they were going to close Danvers, they were going to close a lot of facilities for the mental health people that needed all the help. And we didn't ask them to help us, we begged them. We begged them, please don't do that to us. Please don't do that to the people that need help the most, the most vulnerable. And it went in one ear and out the other, and they closed it, and they closed all the facilities and left the people to ward for themselves out in the street to be the most vulnerable. People weren't monitoring them to take their medication, and they were left in a very auspicious place. It was horrible. And all through the years, it's gotten worse and worse. To the people were taken advantage of, they were abused, they were hurt, they were left to fend for themselves. It's a horrible thing, and yet they run on a higher level for office and say, please do this for me, do the, what are you doing for us? Why don't you straighten this out and help us? And so I know how frustrated you are. I'm the same way. I heard about, this is a public safety issue. I heard about the young woman from the Owl Diner. How does that rest with a business that put their time, their sweat, their money, their energy into a facility? Do you think those children, those young girls are going to want to go back to the Owl Diner? I don't think so. So not only did they create an accident and almost get hurt and kill themselves, and yet they, they hurt a business because they're not going to go back there. So it's a vicious cycle that goes around, and it's very, very frustrating. And I'm at my wit's end, and I'm pissed off as well. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I thank my colleague for bringing this forward. As was mentioned, there's been quite a bit asking the state, as well as the federal government, for assistance with this issue. I think when they closed the mental health facilities, they kind of threw the baby out with the bathwater. I think, they say the model didn't work. And so instead of looking at best practice recommendations from the professionals in the field and altering the model that they were operating, they found it easier to just shut the doors. I think that's where a lot of this began, and gateway cities like ours became overran. There's no way we could possibly service such a large population's needs. I think this is a great motion if we can get a response. I think that there are severe breaks in the social service change. I mean, yes, we have a lot of entry-level low barrier rehab, basic stabilization programs available for the most part, but then what? And I think that's where these components are desperately needed. I think when someone does take that first step to want to get sober or to begin the treatment process, there's nowhere to go after that, that five to seven day bed, if you're lucky to get one. There's nowhere to go to expand upon the mental health services that you need inpatient. Because, yes, in a lot of instances, you hear the housing first model works. But there is a caveat to that, in that if somebody is suffering from mental illness, they're not capable for the most part of running their own household independently. And I think the break in the mental health services, where there's no 30, 60, 90, even 120-day inpatient programs for the mental health services, again, we're seeing the byproduct of all this, the perfect storm. And so I really think this is a great motion, and hopefully we can, we can get a response from the state delegation. And I would ask the maker of the motion, I mean, why should we stop with the state delegation? Would you be open to amending and including the federal? We have a congresswoman that's also here. So I mean, I think we need to plead on all levels and see who responds and what kind of assistance are we able to get, if any. Because again, we've all discussed many, many times here. So if that's okay with the maker of the motion, I would say please try to petition as well, our congresswoman, to see if there's anything they'd be willing to do to help us too. Thank you.
Counsel Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. We have spoken on this issue for the last two years and 11 months that I've been here, and we've tried to go to people. We even had the DA here last springtime, and she was down at the Purple Carrot, and she promised us that a homeless court was going to come to Summer Street by, I believe it was August or October. We haven't seen that yet, that homeless court, but we were promised that. We've been promised a lot of things that just don't pan out, and we just can't keep doing this. I agree with Counsel Belanger's motion, and we strongly need mental health services in our city. We had it before with Solomon's, and I think the facility just ran into disrepair, and the state said, see you later. But at that time, I think the president at the time, it was Reagan, and he pushed to do away with a lot of those services. So it came from the federal government down. So the only way to repair this is to go back to the federal government and push, bring back these services. I thank you again, Counsel Belanger, for this motion. I think as we go forward, we need partners. Everybody comes up here and tells us they're, they're our partner. We had a DA come down for a business issue, tell us they were going to do a homeless court, tell us they were going to help us with Summer Street, and did absolutely nothing, walked away. As much as you hate to say that, and it ain't politically probably the best thing to say, it's the truth. Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't see you see me raising my hand, but appreciate it. Thank you. So, good motion. I know that the managers also have been reaching out, working with the governor's office and other nonprofit around the area in addressing this issue. This is, really is a wraparound kind of service. If you can get the state, Tewksbury State Hospital open, provide not only places for the unhoused, but also... but also those who have addiction and/or mental health to kind of addressing their issue, and maybe also working with the LRTA so that there's transportation for the individuals as well. So, update from the managers on his conversation with the governor office and the big three, certainly it's going to help in additions to speaking with the delegations to help push this issue. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Council Belanger for bringing this forward. I agree with all my colleagues here. There's a lot of work to be done, and it's not something that the city of Lowell can do by itself. We need the assistance of state and federal partners to make anything change here. I did just want to make mention of the incident that Councilor Dakota mentioned with the young women who had somebody banging on their window and get into an accident. This kind of behavior seems to be the MO of, I don't know if it's one individual or multiple individuals in this area. I know of at least two other incidents that are extremely similar. One involved an employee of an organization about two blocks from the Owl Diner, who had someone run up to them slamming on their window, trying to break in, saying, give me five hundred dollars, give me five hundred dollars, you need to give me money, I won't stop. And that person was extremely upset and freaked out, and I don't blame them, and ended up missing a couple days of work because of this experience. Thankfully, there was someone who intervened and stopped this situation, and I believe, actually, I know for a fact that Lowell police came down and were able to effect an arrest here. I don't know if this was the same person who then is doing this behavior to other people, if we have multiple people who are choosing this kind of aggressive assault to try to get money out of people. But it's not a good scene, it's not a good look for the city, it's not a tenable situation, it's not something that we can condone, and we don't condone it, and it's not something that we can tolerate. So whatever we can do to address this and build a better, safer, public square, for lack of a better term, in this area, is something we need to put some serious effort into. So, Mr. Manager, I look forward to hearing what you're able to discuss with our state and federal partners and what our options are, and what kind of assistance the city of Lowell can receive here, because we can't solve this ourselves. Thank you.
Alvin Fearsay, I oppose motion passes. Moving back to Section Four, General Public Hearings, we'll start quickly with our 4.4, the procedural, excuse me, it's the adoption of the minimum residential factor for fiscal year 2025, and your motion to adopt by Council Mercey. I'll start with the opening in favor, in favor, in favor. Portion meeting is closed. Alvin, opposition, opposition, opposition. The portion of the meeting is closed, and your motion to adopt by Council Mercey, second by Council Noon, and just for the record, the residential factor will be .89825 for the calendar 2025 year. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Council Mercey.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yum. Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow. Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Ten years.
You have 4.1, the ordinance, amending zoning, extend UMF District 233 to 268 Mount Vernon, 89 Willie, and 5 Farnham Road. I'm going to obviously take 6-3 communication from the planning board as regard to the zoning changes on said three streets. So back to any questions about 4.1. We'll start with the meeting, are those in favor, in favor, in favor? The portion meeting is closed. Are those in opposition, opposition, opposition? The portion meeting is closed. Your motion to adopt by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Scott. Roll call.
Council Mercey.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yum. Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
And quickly, back to 6-3, as a communication regarding the planning board recommendation,
this motion to accept, placed on file by Council Dakota, and seconded by Council Getchea. Alvin Fearsay, I oppose, motion passes. 4.2, amend Chapter 222 on lawful camping on public property. My second reading. An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Lowell, Massachusetts. In ordinance amending the Code of ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 222 entitled Peace and Good Order by adding 222.22 entitled unlawful camping on public property. Start the meeting, are all of us speak in favor, in favor? Right to the microphone, if I speak in favor. And just starting, everybody for those in favor, in opposition, we ask that you state clearly your name and your address, and just a reminder, you should either work in the city of Lowell or work within the city of Lowell as well. There's a pad on the podium, you can write your name and address down on it, and obviously there's many people here to speak this evening, we ask that you keep the three minutes long. We have a lot of people that want to have their opinions heard. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Charles Ott. I'm a ruling elder and a member of Elliott Presbyterian Church on Summer Street. I am also director of operations, running the day center there. Plight of the displaced persons around South Common, obvious to all of us, has had quite an impact on all who come in contact with them, especially the Elliott Church community of faith. Now, I have a strong commitment to serve these people to the best of our abilities and resources through the mission of the Elliott Day Center. Over time, this has become increasingly difficult. The numbers continue to grow. At one point, two years ago, we were serving about thirty-five people a day coming in our doors. Now, we are serving a hundred and fifty on an average day, and we've hit a hundred and ninety in that area occasionally. Excuse me. There are good in many of these people, but as you've been discussing, the mental health underlying so much of the problem, I'm heartened to hear the discussion going on. These people often are acting as if they should be entitled to care for the care we provide, and still, they disrespect us at the same time, verbally, to our faces, and by their actions, the way they treat us, each other, and the church property. People who hang around the church continuously litter and make a mess of the property, we clean it daily, and have created a position for a person to clean the property on Sundays before worship. Recently, our pastor approached several folks blocking access to the church for Sunday worship. They would not move, and they threatened the pastor. I myself have been physically assaulted five times in the four years of operation I've been there. The law, or the ordinance, I should say, is fair and balanced and proposes steps that are going to help the situation in great measure. Many of the questions that we've been asking that lead to this law are about where the people cannot go, and if we answered one question, it would solve the problem. Where can they go? Thank you.
Lynn Daly, 35 Windward Road. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 222 of the Code of the City of Lowell to address unlawful camping on public property. This is a step in the right direction. The city is being proactive with regards to the safety of all its residents regarding a multifaceted, complex problem. Thank you, Councilor Getchea.
Hi, my name is Dottie Joyce, live at 200 Mass Mill Drive, Farming Gino. I'm going to speak on behalf of my experience as mental health. I'm a veteran. There's no excuse for these homeless veterans. They got help. Look at me, it took me thirty years, plus I'm still in treatment. And there's help out there for veterans if they need it, if they want it. And I got one homeless person, he really took me serious, and he told me two weeks ago, he even got help. And now he's up in Gloucester, the VA in Gloucester. Enough is enough. I got a granddaughter I'm raising, she's eighteen, she's afraid to go downtown or even get in my car to drive. And I do have PTSD. Anybody come to my car, I carry mace, yes, I admit to it, I carry mace. If they knock on my car, or my window's down, they're going to get maced, because it's my car. And it triggered my PTSD, yes. Some of you, I think one person, probably his friend, but not no more, but there's help out there for veterans. And I don't want nobody saying, no, there is, there is. I've been in the system at the VA for thirty years, and I'm still in treatment, and I'm getting better, a hundred percent better. And the city, the city needs to take this seriously, because if we can't drink or do drugs outside, the law states all citizens have to follow the law. Why don't the homeless? They not. There's a veteran home was up on Summer Street, hate to say it, they closed that down because the homeless was on the patio, on the perch, and the veteran was afraid to leave, so they closed that veteran home down, and it's something else there now. And it's very a shame that some of these homeless do come to my car, they like try and attack my car, knock on my window. No, enough is enough. And I, for my protection, I carry mace, I admit to it. It's my protection in my car. And that's all I have to say, I'm for favor of banning the camping, and it looked terrible up there.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Tebow, I live at 25 Farmland Road, and I'm up here to say enough is enough. I can't even run along the river in the day. Don't run at night, I don't run early in the morning when it's dark, because there's people down there now. Three o'clock in the afternoon, and I have some guy yelling threats at me. I mean, come on, really? Another day, I go down there, there's a guy urinating on the wall? I mean, to echo Dottie, why is it that if any one of us did these things in public, we'd be arrested? But it's okay because these people don't want to get help? No, enough is enough. I worked with the homeless, and I can echo what the counselor has said about the issue of not having enough mental health beds. Definitely, it's a huge problem. And so, we elect you guys, and we hire city managers, you have the governor's ear, you're our representation, and so, I support this ordinance, I think it's a good idea, I think it's going in the right direction, but I'm asking you guys, you've got to aggressively pursue the state and federal government for funding, for backup. I mean, people want bathrooms, people want podhouses, I've seen and heard all the different things, but where does that money come from? We, my family, is a single-income family on a tradesman's salary. We're not rolling in the dough. We can only afford so many tax increases. It's a problem bigger than Lowell, and the solution is got to be much bigger than Lowell. So I'm asking you guys to represent us, the people, the taxpayers, to the state and federal government. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob Hoey from 67 Stratum Street. I banged my head all day on this issue, and I'll say this, we got twenty-eight schools in the city of Lowell, and this mayor and this city council, to me, has done a fabulous job on trying to maintain the schools. And it's always good to maintain your buildings, we know that, and they haven't done it for over fifty years, but you also got to keep your schools safe. And I went to the Rogers School for the fifth, sixth, seventh grade, went to the eighth grade at the Butler, and then back to the ninth grade at the Rogers School, Edith North Rogers School. And there was nothing better than looking at that park, the ballpark, and having a teacher hit me, ground balls, and it's just a beautiful place, we're spending a ton of money on there, and this is what bothers me, more than the safety of the Rogers School, is if you stood on the South Common pool, right on the pool, and just go a half-mile radius, it'll bring you down to Lauren Street and the river, and go all around St. Anthony's Church and that parish, and then you would think the trains and the parking lots don't have any children. Well, let me tell you, on a given day, any given day, you got between eight hundred and a thousand children in the Rogers School. But think of how many people you have in that radius that I just said, and how many children there are. But then, you can go down any day, because the city council knows me, the folks don't know me here, but I'll tell you something, you can go down any day and find hypodermic needles, I'll take you there anytime you want. It's simple, but that's not my issue. How about the other people? There's almost a thousand in the Rogers School, I'll bet you, there's at least two thousand more children in that radius that I was talking to. But in a summer day, eighty-five degrees, you'll only get two kids in that swimming pool, okay? With four lifeguards. But then take a ride to the North Common, another housing project, right? They'll have sixty to a hundred people in that pool, and you don't see no tents down there. So I am in favor of this. I respect you all for what you're doing for our schools, and mayor, I've said it a hundred times on the show, and you know it, you're doing a fabulous job, pal, keep up the work, and this city council, God bless you for what you've done to our schools, okay? Thank you.
In favor? In favor? The portion meeting is closed. Now, open up to those in opposition, opposition.
Hello, my name is Moss, and I live on Varnum Avenue, so I have the script, so I'll be reading from it. First, I would like to read a verse from James, Chapter Two, verse fourteen to sixteen. "What good is it, my brothers and sisters, if someone claims to have faith but has no deeds? Can such faith save them? Suppose a brother or a sister is without clothes and daily food. If one of you says to them, 'Go in peace, keep warm, and well-fed,' but does nothing to help their physical needs, what good is it?" That's from the Bible. "I was unhoused as a child, and has left scars that have never healed, including PTSD that has never healed because of being unhoused. The suffering I went through is because of being homeless, and that directly made my mental health worse, not the reverse. Going through with this ordinance will worsen the lives of unhoused people and does nothing to make their lives better. By passing this ordinance, you will worsen the lives of people experiencing one of the worst traumas and leave scars deeper than ever before. Their lifelong suffering is your choice. Choose wisely."
Hello, my name is Corey Ross. I live on 200 Market Street and in Canal Place, this is my first time speaking at city council, and I just have this to say, without addressing the root causes that lead people to set up shelters and tents in the first place, simply moving them around or imposing legal hurdles will only exacerbate their already difficult circumstances. Making their lives harder is unlikely to resolve the underlying issues here. The residents of Lowell urge you to consider more practical and compassionate solutions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophie, I am a UMass Lowell nursing student who is concerned about Lowell's homeless population, since my family has volunteered to help unhoused people in the city for the past few years, and I'm asking you to vote against the proposed ban. To begin, I doubt that the ban will reduce camping, since there is really nowhere else for people to stay. Last winter, the Lowell Transitional Living Center ran out of space, and the number of unhoused individuals in Lowell has only increased since then. As a result, I am concerned that encampment sweeps in the colder months will cause someone to freeze to death. My family knew people whose camps were bulldozed during a sweep in January 2023. Many of their necessary belongings, like blankets, tents, and mattresses, were thrown away. And after camp clearing, such as the type suggested in the ordinance, some people will be forced to camp outdoors, since the Lowell Transitional Living Center does not have enough room, which could potentially, I'm concerned, could potentially cause someone to freeze to death if their tents and blankets have been thrown away. Also, even if there was enough space- have been thrown away. Also, even if there was enough space in the Lowell Transitional Living Center, I don't believe people should be forced to stay there. The shelter is understaffed and festered with rodents, cockroaches, and bedbugs. One unhoused woman I know said that the food maker's sick. Last I heard, the shelter only offers separate spaces for men and women. So I think, I suspect that many people decide to camp outdoors to stay with their spouses and other family members. The individuals who run the shelter are hard working and commendable for their service. I'm not trying to be down on them, but I understand why many people might choose not to live in the shelter. And I recognize that homelessness is a problem in Lowell, but this camping ban is not the solution. The only way I can imagine the ban actually reducing camping in Lowell is if the campers were arrested and thrown in jail. And people should not be arrested and jailed for being poor. I don't think that's a good solution here. I also want to address the myth that homeless people are only in that situation because they want to be. Over time, my family has met a number of unhoused Lowell residents who have been on waiting lists for years but have not received housing. And I do appreciate that the city has spent millions of dollars on services for the homeless. I think they have tried to do stuff for that. But unfortunately, that money doesn't equate to housing for everyone in need. As housing costs skyrocket, more people are becoming homeless, so more people will be criminalized if this ban is passed. As a result, yeah, I'm asking you to please vote against this ban. And yeah, thank you for listening to what I had to say.
If I could just ask, just for recording purposes, if you just please write your name and your address on the pad of paper that's there. It's easier to track who said what when I wear. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Afferman. I live at two-hundred Market Street in Lowell. A lot of what I had meant to say has just been said, including Councilor Lanza's motion of getting in more in touch with the state delegation. So what I'm gonna say is gonna be much shorter than I intended, which I'm sure none of you would mind. You've probably seen me here, sitting in the seats before. I've attended many city council meetings. I have seen and heard how you all have wrestled with this issue of homelessness, and how best to deal with it. And I understand your frustration, that after all this time and money that you spent on it, no really good solution has come forth. This situation seems to be getting worse and worse instead of better. So that would frustrate me too, if that was happening to me. The one thing that made me wanna speak today was that I've heard many a times, have it said, that these people are not from here. They come from surrounding communities, because Lowell has all these services. And that may be stopped, because I'm not from Lowell, as you can probably hear. I only moved here seven years ago because of the amenities and the benefits services that are available in downtown Lowell. I am widowed, I am on social security, and I don't have any immediate family living near me. So like many of us, I'm really one catastrophic event away from not being able to afford housing. Then what happens? Am I turning into one of those undesirable people from elsewhere? That should go back where she came from. And where am I going? Am I going back to Chansford, where I lived before, but where I don't really know anybody well enough that I could ask them to live with them? Or would you want me to go all the way back to the small town in Germany where I grew up to solve Lowell's problem? I don't know that that would be my first choice. But I'm not from here. So in that sense, I fall into that same category. I understand that the city of Lowell, like it has been said by the counselors and by several of the other speakers, the ones in favor of the motion as well as opposed, that the city of Lowell cannot solve this by themselves. And I had meant to say, since, and I'm gonna say it anyway, since Representative Elliott and Senator Kennedy both have been members of this body for many years, Senator Kennedy, when he was mayor, his picture hangs out there in the hallway, and City Manager Golden has been a state representative for ever so many years. So I would assume, I'm echoing what was said before, you must still have, unless you threw out all your contacts, deleted them all from your phone, you must still be in touch with your former colleagues. I mean, I would probably know how to reach some of them. I know I know how to reach Councilor Mercier, she knows it. But then everybody knows how to reach Councilor Mercier. So that was what I was going to say, and it has already been said. Please, reach out to your friends, not only our state delegation, but also the people that you have made contacts with in your many years in the state house. There must be some people left that you know. Am I running out of time? Okay. So I'm getting to the point that, I am at the end, rather than pitting us, the ones that have houses, against those that do not have houses, and making it one against the other, let's come together. The city of Lowell has a long history of solving difficult problems. Let's come together, let's fight the help we need, and let's find a solution that is beneficial for everybody, whether housed or unhoused. Thank you.
Hello, there. My name's Colin Gallagher. Excuse me. I live on one oh five Walker Street. Good evening, Mayor Rourke, council member, and member of this community. Thank you for letting me speak today. I am a senior at UMass Lowell. I'm very involved on campus. I'm studying finance and marketing right now. This is not really something I've ever pictured myself doing. I'm speaking on behalf tonight of a significant portion of students at UMass Lowell who completely disagree with this ordinance. I'm aware that this ordinance is being influenced by the recent Supreme Court ruling, which was in July, Grants Pass versus Johnson, which overturned previous restrictions established under Martin v. City of Boise. You know, the city of Boise in two thousand eighteen passed similar ordinances that outlawed public camping, and the Supreme Court ruled that to be unconstitutional. But in July two thousand twenty-four, they said that that was allowed. On a podcast in July, Mayor Rourke mentioned that the city had enough shelter beds, reportedly around a hundred thirty to address this problem. However, a Lowell Sun article in February, from a few months before, cited a homeless count of roughly three hundred individuals, leaving about a hundred seventy people without access to shelter. I emphasize the discrepancy between the numbers of available shelter beds and the actual homeless population in Lowell could expose the city to potential litigation. I still believe, due to the potential lack of beds and the disparity between private reports on homelessness versus the city, cities reported number of beds, the ordinance could open up potential lawsuits under the Eighth Amendment. Passing it might not be in Lowell's best interest. I can speak to how some of you feel about it. I know you guys have been working really hard to fix this. But based on the reaction from students that I've talked to, from members of this community around me, and from people in the homeless community, this ordinance does not seem like the right approach. We all share the same goal of helping people and getting people off the streets, you know, and getting them employed. However, our views to reach this differ greatly. I ask you guys, rather than risking a lawsuit from a, you know, nonprofit or a civil liberties union, these funds could be better allocated to assist those experiencing homelessness on a case-by-case basis, instead of a money lost, money in the city lost in a lawsuit. Thank you all for considering my perspective. And once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Felix Brown. I live at one forty-one John Street in Lowell. And I'm a residential counselor for individual homeless services with community teamwork. Many people here tonight are speaking opposed to this ordinance, because it is haphazard and inhumane. It will impact so many lives in so many disastrous ways. It cannot be articulated properly. But I am here reading the remarks of Dr. Krista Hodapp, a professor at UMass Lowell. And I am asking city council to oppose amending this ordinance. Women experienced domestic violence have, for many years, been among the hidden unhoused in the United States. Because survivors of domestic violence also often find protection and safety in anonymity and confidential locations, their visibility as part of the unhoused community is often diminished or erased. Nonetheless, federal and other cuts in subsidized housing, coupled with an overwhelming housing crisis in the United States, has greatly limited access to safe and affordable housing for survivors and their children. Domestic violence is one of the leading causes of homelessness for women and children, and multiple studies over ninety percent of homeless women have experienced sexual or physical abuse at some point. Maybe sixty percent have experienced, have been subjected to domestic violence as adults. Many women who, for any number of reasons, failed to be served by domestic violence shelters and triage services, end up homeless or in other shelters, or completely without housing. For instance, in two thousand twenty-two, one thousand six hundred forty-two domestic violence programs were unable to meet over six thousand seven hundred forty-eight requests for housing services. On average, it takes a homeless family six to eight months to secure housing. It is well-known that domestic violence traumatizes survivors and their children. We also know that economic and financial abuse are common aspects of domestic violence, significantly impairing a survivor's ability to safely and successfully leave these situations and enter dwelling spaces with adequate resources. These people are in crisis, often with few options. There are many reasons to oppose camping bans and sweeps and displacements that will result from them. As many have and will point out, this doesn't address the underlying problems, or make supposedly inconvenient people disappear. But it also inadvertently or not puts innocent survivors and vulnerable persons in these spaces at risk of further displacement, trauma, or even ending back in an abusive situation out of desperation. This is not an acceptable solution. It is an oversimplified response to a problem being framed as a nuisance to residents, as opposed to the human crisis it is. Even worse, it's a refusal to recognize this crisis is precisely why this ordinance will undoubtedly fail as a solution or remedy. It is both a practical and ethical failure. Lowell needs to do better. Thank you.
My name is Elia Hearn of seventy-five Martin Street. I'm a resident of District Four here in Lowell. Moved here from Drakehead after a difficult time in my life. To me, Lowell represents the ability to exist as myself. As such, Lowell is a city that is very meaningful to me, filled with some of the most absolutely spectacular people I have ever met. Lowell is a city for everyone, whether they have been here for ten years or ten minutes. This is why I'm here today, because I feel the need to oppose the betrayal of my city. This attack on our most vulnerable members is for the benefit of developers and is an attempt to sell out our city for profit. This ordinance is an attack on the heart of Lowell, is an attack on the city itself. Lowell is not the fancy new buildings that are being built. It is people. Lowell is not improved through tax breaks for developers. It is improved through lifting up our communities and celebrating the beauty that is its members. I've heard the voices of cowards, some of which are here today, implying that our unhoused neighbors are not actually part of the city, saying that they are from outside Lowell, saying in insidious absurdity that other cities are dropping them off here in the dark of night, as if that will make us welcome them any less. As far as I'm concerned, the second they are here, they are Lowellians. There are people here that are upset, and I've heard that. But the depths of that anger, think of that as opposed to the despair that this is going to put people under, that people are going to feel when their lives are, who are already underprivileged, are destroyed by this ordinance. This is not okay to do. I ask that anyone here on the council who cares about the city more than they care about money, that they will vote against this ordinance and protect our neighbors. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Connie Mortara, and I reside at two-hundred Market Street in Lowell. And I've lived here since two thousand thirteen. I must state that I do work for the trial court of the Commonwealth here at the Kirnen Center. But all comments that I make tonight are my personal opinion shared as a resident of Lowell. I love my adopted city, but I'm frustrated by the lack of compassion shown in this ordinance, and the willingness to continue the hard work of supporting all members of the community in a respectful and productive way. The homeless issue is not new to Lowell, and our responses are not novel either. I understand the frustration of this board of the city. I get it. And also, the frustration of businesses and community members. But the homeless issue isn't going to go away by putting people in jail, or putting them on buses to a city forty-five miles away. We do not have safe places for unhoused folks to go in this city. We can't hide the problem and address it with a criminal sanction, hoping it will go away. The city has acknowledged insufficient cooling and warming spaces for folks. The LTLC is operating in a crumbling building, and we lost the Life Connection Center, which provided safe bathroom facilities, showers, and food. When petitioned for emergency warming and cooling shelters, this body in the city kicked it back to the petitioners. The mission of the Office of Homeless Initiatives is to foster community collaborations that work to prevent and reduce homelessness in the city. Why doesn't our city offer to partner with agencies and access funding? As has been mentioned here many times, we have people who've moved up in the system. We have contacts. Together with the agencies and the city, we could address some money and look at some long-term solutions that will address the underlying problems. And they're huge. And they're right. We can't do it alone. We need to do it together. Other cities, though, have found creative ways to address it. Other cities have created day centers. They provide mobile bathing and laundry facilities, so people can have the dignity of a shower and some clean clothing. Putting vulnerable folks on buses to a city forty-five miles away, where they are separated from any community contacts they may have remaining, is just hiding the problem, and does not do anything to address the issue in the long term. Instead of complaining about homeless folks using public pools to bathe, why don't we figure out a creative way to make the shower and toilet facilities available to those who need them? Instead of punishing someone for pitching a tent to protect themselves from the elements, why don't we find a way to work with them on guidelines for camping, while continuing to offer supportive services, in hopes that they will transition out? I believe also that this ordinance is unnecessary, and demonstrates a lack of concern for the most vulnerable among us. That's not who we are. That's not who you are. We already have statutes and ordinances to deal with public drug use, guns, trafficking. We have them. Why do we want to add another layer to something we already have, and traumatize folks by pulling the only piece of safety they may have, that one tent, that sleeping bag, that they're using to hold them grounded for this moment, in what is likely a very traumatic time in their lives? I don't want to be, see our city be in the position of demonizing people, instead of looking for sustained, multi-pronged solutions to support our entire community. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for taking the time to be here. My name is Miles Foster. I'm a resident of Lowell at seventeen East Meadow Lane, previously two-hundred Market Street. I'm a mathematics student at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. I'm here to speak out and condemn ordinance two twenty-two. The city should be providing affordable housing, adequate halfway housing and shelter, and social services, if it is indeed concerned about the living conditions within the unhoused encampments. Criminalizing poverty is cruel and inhumane. You speak about the aggression and violence of the Lowell unhoused population. Aside from the fact that these people represent a minority of the homeless population, you must understand that these actions of these aggressive individuals are made out of desperation, and their actions are shaped by their conditions. The idea that these people are in the condition and their actions are shaped by their conditions. The idea that these people are in the condition because they chose to be is obviously unsubstantiated. To the previous speakers defending this motion, we seem to be in agreement that things need to change. And if you wish to change their actions, you must lift them from their conditions. Our community now struggles to help themselves, and so we must step up and support our community. Please focus on rehabilitation, not punishment. I think it has been made clear what the people of Lowell support at this meeting, and I ask that the council respect the voice of their constituency. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm currently recovering from pneumonia, so I can't wear my glasses, so I cannot see. So if I run out of time, I need like a loud something, please, but I don't think I will. Um, so I just wanted to come here. I haven't been here before. Um, I live on 180, sorry. My name is Santina Tarowski. I live on 186 University Ave, right up the street. I could have walked here, but it's kind of cold. Um, I've lived here for 12 years now. I am fully aware of the encampments around the Merrimack River. I've seen some homeless people camping outright by University Ave. I often get up early in the morning. I go for a run, and I will see them. Um, I am not bothered in the sense that I wish they were arrested. I wish that we gave them help. Um, I kind of think of Lowell as a city where people come to do good things. I moved here 12 years ago for a job in Lawrence, um, and that is why I've not been to these meetings. I often go to Lawrence City Council. I'm a Lawrence Teacher Union, and I'm part of the Merrimack River East Central Labor Council, so I'm familiar with several of the city council members by name and a little bit by face that I can see. So I'm, I'm familiar with y'all. Um, but I sent an email to everyone, and then I was convinced that nobody actually reads emails, so I came here. Um, so I just wanted you to please vote against this bill. I find it to be punitive, and research has shown penalizing the most vulnerable amongst us does not dissuade them. We must offer some wraparound services and shelters. Not that I know how to do that, but this is what I'm feeling. Um, we should be able to come up with a better plan than arresting them and just hiding them out. I know the SCOTUS said it's not cruel and unusual, but I find that laughable. It is cruel to criminalize homelessness. They're already the most vulnerable. They do not have money for these fees, so I find that cruel. Is it unusual? Well, this is America, and we have the highest incarceration rate in all of the world, so I guess it's not that unusual. However, that does not mean it is the correct move. All right? So I think that we need to come up with a different way, and I know we said we're, we're mad at the state level. Well, I don't know, because I haven't been here, but I'm wondering, what are we doing? Have we reached out enough? Have we made the case that, hey, we need help here? As I've heard many people say, the numbers are only 300. That is a small fraction of people that could use help. We have that transitional, um, building that I used to work next to. I used to work at the community charter, and I would see people lined up there at night to get in, and then they cut off. We need sustainable solutions, as someone else has mentioned. All right? Um, I do not think that this is something we should even be considering, even though I've seen since SCOTUS said it's not cruel and unusual, that several towns and cities in our nation, considering Bozeman, Montana, Missoula, Montana, and Brockton, Massachusetts, and now considerous. It does not mean it makes it right. We have a chance to do what is right, and that is what I hope we will do. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anne Isler. I'm gonna put my glasses back on. I have photophobia. I'm Anne Isler, and I'm from 134 Westford Street. Finally off the streets. Last October. Not saying it's a perfect situation, so I get why people go back there. I do. I, I, I'm actually close to going back out on the street due to mice and mold. But, long story short, so you guys opened up the can of worms with the mental health issue. Okay, so this is a stigmatism that people with mental health can't take care of themselves. There are plenty of actresses, actors, many well-off people. I'm sure some of you on the council might even have mental health illnesses. That does not mean you are not able to take care of yourself, clean a house, provide yourself food, work, whatever. That's a big stigmatism. Sure, there are some that have mental health issues that can't take care of themselves, and that's why we needed those places. I truly believe my brother wouldn't have died in 2012 had they not closed down his group home, and he had to go to a apartment. He choked to death on a piece of steak because he was alone and not near staff anymore. So yes, these mental health places do have to open back up, and yes, you, you want to arrest them all, but you got to do a diagnosis. You can't just send somebody to rehab and not do a diagnosis, because there's a reason why they went to that in the first place. It's not just one subject. It's got to be both that are treated. Um, but arresting everybody that's still out there, why can't we find them, everybody? If you want to do this ordinance, then fine, do it, but make sure that everybody that's out on the street first is provided housing. That's all I ask. And have a heart. Thank you. Jesus was homeless.
Hello. Uh, my name's Liz Anasaskis. Uh, I work, I've been a community organizer and civic engagement coordinator with Lowell Alliance for two years, so I've been in the community for a couple of years now. I used to live at 27 Heard Street, um, next to the, um, courthouses, um, that are, like, were recently, uh, vacated. Um, recently, um, yeah, I've been really disappointed, uh, by this ordinance that was brought up by the city council, um, directing the city solicitors to draft this ordinance, and I'm strongly opposed to the citywide encampment ban. Um, this ban only furthers the cycle of violence for residents and community members. Criminalizing homelessness is not a solution. It's not a solution. This ordinance would make it harder to provide, provide services, and I know this because I've talked to service providers, and I'm really curious, uh, if, how many city councillors here have actually talked to unhoused community members, have actually talked to service providers that this ordinance would directly target, uh, starting as early as possibly Monday, starting as early as next Tuesday. Um, would love to know who y'all have talked to, um, because again, I've talked to them, and this would dramatically change and impact the work they do. Um, every time, uh, folks from the Emergency Housing Coalition attend this meeting, uh, I hear from councillors responding, telling us to offer solutions, and every time I hear them speak, um, I hear them offer solutions and ideas and creative solutions and opportunities. Um, the city council failed to pass a motion, as, uh, was previously stated, around warming and cooling centers. Uh, we've had a community member come and continue to share creative ideas on how to better support residents in LTLC through arts programming and increased resources, through a firsthand account of living at LTLC. Um, on October 17th, the director of LTLC made a post asking councillors about their plans for increased mental health services. Uh, substance abuse programs are actually affordable housing, and we saw in today's motion, right, there are moments where it appears you're listening, and it appears you're making these motions, um, but then developers come and they propose housing plans, and they're not questioned by councillors deeply enough, uh, as to whether or not the housing plans they're making are actually going to be affordable for our residents, particularly our unhoused residents, or folks that are right at the lowest level, uh, and need, need more affordable housing units. Um, the, this council has also talked about converting old courthouses. I mentioned I used to live at 27 Heard Street, next to that old courthouse. Uh, so again, you've made these motions, but then there's no transparent, uh, change in actions around like what's come of those things, um, which is really frustrating. Um, councillor Mercy, you're right. You talked today about how, uh, years ago, you were begging the state not to close a local hospital that offered mental health services, and it went one ear, in one ear, out the other for those folks, and I'm really, I'm really asking y'all that that doesn't happen today, uh, with this motion and the folks that are speaking here in opposition to this motion. Um, again, this ordinance is both disappointing and cruel, and I urge the councillors to vote no on this ordinance, as it would only continue the vicious cycle of violence, and do nothing to support and empower unhoused residents in our community.
Hi there. My name is, um, Victoria Holland. I work at House of Hope on Fletcher Street. I am a local author, and I have been commuting to Lowell almost daily for the last eight years. I frequent many local establishments, including Mill 5 and the Worthing. I know several Lowell citizens. I participate in community events and organizations, and I also work as, well, preside in residential support staff at House of Hope. Um, I am also an alumnus of the now-closed Franco-American School. Um, so, this was going to be a discussion on morality, but I stepped, stepped into this council meeting, and it's not the best approach, I feel. Um, what I'm trying to say here is that I heard, I've heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of, like, angles today on the situation. I know a lot of members of the council are angry because that there are a lot of violent, uh, there seem to be a lot of violent homeless people. I work in House, I work at House of Hope. Uh, there are many Haitian, Haitian Creole, uh, refugees that are staying at House of Hope, and I am also, I've, and paradoxically, I have also witnessed the violence that has happened among the homeless community, and some of them have flirted with me when I really did not want them to. Sorry, that's not your business. But the point is, is that, um, the point is, is that, like, I'm looking from both of your perspectives. The reason this is happening with them is because these refugees have traveled through Third World countries in wars and been dislocated from their homes and taken to Lowell because it volunteered to be a sanctuary city. And you are all, you are all incredibly frustrated that the federal government won't help you, but I feel like people are not recognizing that since COVID-19 happened, and since we had to make a huge cultural shift to make everything work, things have changed drastically for everybody. You, you, you are all very frustrated that the federal government won't help you, and that's because the federal government, in some ways, is struggling just as much as you are. Okay? There is a huge, huge systemic issue going on right now, and unfortunately, your frustration, while warranted because the federal government is dragging their effing feet, sorry. Um, the whole point is, the whole point I'm trying to get at is that you do have the resources. You do have the ability to fix this. You just shouldn't wait for the money. Okay? You're going to the federal government to get the proper finances to be able to do these things, but you have people. You have thousands of people at your disposal who have, who have the knowledge, you have the know-how. You can work with them. It'll be on a voluntary basis, and that might piss some people off, but you do have the ability to go in and fix these problems. You won't be able to get the funding you want from the federal government. Okay? It's a mess, and we're a mess because of it. Okay? And the fact is, is that I know that this is hard to hear. I know it sounds, it's, I know it sounds crazy, but in case you guys didn't turn on your television, or didn't look out your windows, Rome is burning, and homelessness is only one symptom of this burning syst, system. The last time it was this bad was the Great Depression. Do you know what got us out of that? World War II. Do you guys really want to wait for World War III so we can, so, so that we can kick off? The point is, um, the point is, stop waiting for the federal government to, to fix this. Do it voluntarily. You can do it. Uh, people up there are breaking rules as we speak, so why can't we break the rules and use compassion to help people instead? Because we can do it, money or not.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Pellerito, 327 Aiken Street. I live and work in Lowell, and I have a disability, and I'd like to talk about that tonight. Um, you don't see me with my cane today, but when I have a flare or my medication is unavailable, I use it to get around. Um, and I'm lucky because I have a job that provides me health insurance, um, because without that insurance, my medication would be $8,000 a month, and without that medication, my bones would slowly disintegrate. It's not great. I've also experienced domestic violence. Um, and I have been at a space where I have had to, sorry, I've had to go to my landlord and say, I need you to replace my door because it's been kicked in. Um, and I was able to lock myself in my bathroom, and my landlord said, what did you do to make him so mad? So in a perfect world, we wouldn't be talking about this. We would have resources, but this is how our world treats people with disabilities, and this is how our world treats people who experience domestic violence. Um, so I want to focus today on, on urban centers for disabled people, um, with the recognition that there's no skill, there's nothing that I did to get myself out of, out of the risk of homelessness. It's dumb luck and a support system and privilege. Um, so studies show that people with disabilities are overrepresented to the tune of a quarter to half of people who are unhoused. Having one or more in disabilities, we're not just talking about mental health here. Um, we're not just talking about substance use disorders. We're also talking about intellectual and developmental, um, physical disabilities, every, every category. Um, and these disabilities, yes, including substance use disorder, they are not a lifestyle choice. They're not about laziness. They're not about poor morals. Um, we know this, right? We know that there are social and political causes for those, as well as medical causes. I'm not going to talk about the, the reasons why, because I think we've spent a lot of time talking about that tonight. Um, but we know that people with disabilities who are homeless might be more likely to come to cities like Lowell than to live in suburbs or rural areas. So I'm, we don't know, right? We have anecdotal evidence that maybe some of the people who are homeless are not from here. We can't track that in any meaningful way right now. And they're not coming here because Lowell is such an amazing place to be homeless, some kind of like paradise for the homeless. It's because we have a bus line. We have access to grocery stores. We have more people around, and that can make the difference between life and death when your disability means that you can't navigate space for any number of reasons why that would be challenged. So when our city accuses suburban and rural towns of sending their unhoused to us, it, they may or may not be correct, but when you tell people to go back where they came from, you cut off a lifeline to specifically the disabled homeless. Um, former English teacher, maybe you read Oliver Twist in school, maybe saw the musical. Um, when Oliver holds up his bowl, right, and asks for more, um, he's punished because he is daring to voice the inadequacy of the system that is abusing him. What, this is where it gets wonky. What Dickens was criticizing in Oliver Twist was actually the Poor Laws of 1834, where people were determined to be deserving or undeserving poor, where they were banished from towns and sent back to where they came from, and whether they had ties there or not, and where families were separated and incarcerated in workhouses that were basically like prisons, like the ones that we shut down in the 80s, um, and didn't replace with anything, um, in terms of resources. So hopefully that should sound familiar to you. Um, and that, of course, opens the door to eugenics and social Darwinism, and I won't go down that road. But, um, like, like Oliver, we have the audacity to stand here today and ask you for more. More accountability and resources, yes, more courage to do the right thing, more heart to see the unhoused as our neighbors and as a worthy part of our community, more intelligence and creativity to look for and demand solutions that uplift instead of dehumanize. We don't throw people away. We don't institutionalize them against their will. People with disabilities have the right to live here. We have the right to access services and public transportation. We have a right to be visible downtown or anywhere else, and we, you, you do not have the right to throw up your hands and say that this problem is bigger than us, so there's nothing we can do about it. Can we solve this problem here tonight? No. But to do nothing is unacceptable. And in the words of Dorothy Day, "No one has a right to sit down and feel hopeless." There's too much work to do. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Darcy Boyer, and I live and work in Lowell. I'm here to express my deep concern about the proposed camping ban targeting unhoused individuals in our city.
May I give you the address?
235 Avon Street.
Thank you very much.
Your district. Uh, this policy is not only misguided, but it is also cruel, and it will not solve the underlying issues contributing to homelessness. In fact, it will only make life harder for those who are already struggling to survive. Over the past few years, many of us have witnessed firsthand how our neighbors who are unhoused have had their belongings swept away, thrown into dump trucks time and again. These actions disrupt, disrupt their lives, forcing them to rebuild from scratch, only to face the same cycle of displacement. Despite this, many of them remain in Lowell, because this is home for them. They have friends, family, jobs, and roots here. Forcing them to leave is not a solution, and it won't address the systemic issues that cause homelessness in the first place. Even if some individuals do leave as a result of this ban, they will simply be replaced by others, because the housing crisis is real. The number of housing insecure individuals is growing, and until we address the root causes of this crisis, lack of affordable housing and well-paying jobs, inadequate mental health and addiction services, and a broken system of support, these problems will only persist. Rather than taking the easy route of punitive measures, spending precious resources on harassment and punishment, we must demand real solutions. This ban takes advantage of a harmful and inhumane ruling by the Supreme Court earlier this year, the same court that has rolled back protections for women, workers, and the environment. Instead of addressing the underlying Instead of addressing the underlying needs of our most vulnerable residents, the ban punishes them without providing any meaningful support or opportunity for them to get back on their feet. In these chambers, I've heard many of you deny the lived experience of unhoused folks who have bravely come before you to speak against sweeps. I have heard you say there are plenty of resources. People just don't want help. You say this despite what you hear from our unhoused neighbors and the community members and organizations who know and work with them. Despite this, I have hope that we, as a community, can do better. We have an opportunity to prioritize the needs of people over business and corporations. We can fight for real solutions, resources, and policies that provide stable housing, healthcare, and mental health services. The issue of homelessness is you not, is not unique to Lowell, as many have said. It is happening across the country, and it is not sustainable. We cannot simply continue pushing people further to the margins and pretend that the crisis will go away. I ask you, how do you want to be remembered? Do you want to be known as a city that enacted policies that made life harder for people already struggling to survive? Or do you want to be a community that did the hard work of standing up for everyone, that pushed back against harmful policies and advocated for true compassion and care for all? Instead of cruelty, let Lowell lead with compassion and a commitment to community care. We can and we must do better. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is Courtney Covielo. Um, I live actually at 9 Washington Street, AR, Massachusetts, but I freelance in Lowell still. Um, I've worked in Lowell. I was born in Lowell. I still have family in Lowell. Um, I have a lot of cultural ties to Lowell. My family, my great-grandparents came here from the Azores and Madeira to escape poverty. And, you know, unfortunately with me, it just didn't end there. Um, I love this city, and I'm begging you, I'm not asking, I'm begging you not to pass this ordinance, because it will do more harm than good. I've worked so hard in my life. I've, I've worked a lot of jobs where I've been seen as a good worker. Um, and I've, you know, I got a degree from Middlesex Community College. I have a degree from UMass Lowell, and it didn't matter at the end of the day because I still had to sleep in my car. Or I had to couch hop. And I'm still consider myself very lucky and very privileged that I didn't have to sleep outside. And although it was very temporary at a dark time in my life, I still wouldn't want anyone to go through that. And I'm still perceived as someone who is successful. I work at an Ivy League college in Cambridge. I'm in a really good union that gives me health insurance. And, um, I still was unlucky in that moment in my life, and it could happen to anybody, any of us. So when we go, the next time we judge someone and their situation, we really don't know. It's, life is so nuanced, is so nuanced. Every single thing about life is so incredibly complex and nuanced, and so, I mean, you, just looking at me, you probably wouldn't have known I was sleeping in my car a year ago. I don't tell a lot of people that, and here I am telling everybody now. I'm not proud, but I did what I had to do for my mental health, surprisingly. Um, and I'm just, I'm begging you, please don't pass this. This is setting a horrible precedent for our future. This is not the heritage I want for the future, not for my success, or is not for if I ever have children or their children. I'm just, I'm begging you. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Oates. I live at 33 East Meadow Lane, Lowell, Massachusetts. I'm here to speak against motion 4.2. I think from everything I've heard tonight, we all agree that homelessness is a major problem in our city. When people are living outside, it's not safe for the unhoused person, and as we've discussed tonight, it's not safe for other people using public spaces either. I heard last month about the impact on residents and the Lowell Housing Authority, and I think we're on the same page, that we want to reduce homelessness and protect everyone from harm. It sounds like where we disagree is how we solve this issue. Too often, I think we put the onus of change on the individual and not on the institutions available to support them. Criminalizing homelessness, breaking up encampments, moving people around in circles is not going to solve this problem. But there are some proven models that work. There are only two countries in Europe where homelessness is decreasing, Denmark and Finland. Both of these countries follow a Housing First model. In a Housing First model, social services, like community teamwork here, um, get people a home, and then support them with services for mental health and addiction and other services as needed. In Finland, and I'm going to quote from The Guardian here, "Since the launch of Housing First in 2008, the number of long-term homeless people in Finland has fallen by more than It works, and that's why cities all over Massachusetts are starting to use the Housing First model. Um, I'm very excited that the city was able to use $2 million in federal ARPA funds to build 19 new permanent supportive housing units. It's a huge first step. I understand that the city only has so many resources, and that's why I agree with what Councilor Mercer said on, um, August 27th, that, you know, we're providing services the best we can, um, but we need higher help from Congress, from the Senate, and the state and federal partners. Um, you know, we need a lot more resources to be able to solve this problem. Where do we get those resources, you may ask? To that I say, tax the billionaires. In September, many of the advocates here today met with State Representative Vanna Howard to talk about the unhoused population. Many of us also worked to elect Tara Hong, uh, because major tenets of his campaign were affordable housing and homelessness. Uh, I'm excited to have a team of people to work with. So instead of this motion, I encourage us, you know, instead of kicking people, I think we should continue to work together to advocate with our state and federal elected officials to brainstorm ways to get us more funding for evidence-based solutions like permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
My name is Giovanna Mason. I live at 415 Pawtucket Street. I'm here to speak against the ordinance to ban camping. This is not a solution. This is a costly and ineffective response to the collective housing insecurity that affects all Lowellians and everyone in this nation and everyone in this world at this time. Fines, arrests, and sections to hospitals are temporary measures that put a strain on already stretched emergency services, as well as re-traumatize people who are living outside. We're not saying that there are easy fixes to this problem, but our local government has many options available to it. People spoke today about partnering with our service organizations, leveraging our connections to state and federal governments, as well as using the windfall ARPA funding you've received and putting that into public housing initiatives instead of these business beautification projects. Or funding jobs programs for building renovation work needed to make that public housing, and joining other Massachusetts cities and pressuring the state legislature to lift the ban on rent control. Instead, what Lowell's municipal government has elected to do over the last few years, and especially since the winter of 2022, is increase the policing of encampments of unhoused and housing insecure people throughout the city, attempting to violently remove the most visible manifestation of the larger problem you refuse to address and destroy the lives of our most vulnerable neighbors in the process. We do not believe that, that bans and criminalization are ever the answer, but given that Lowell city officials are now considering these punitive measures, we wonder, why would you enact this ordinance before there are proposed solutions in place? There are talks of a new day center, but when will it be open? How will people access it? Will it be inclusive to all mentally ill people, all people struggling with substance abuse disorder, and families, and so on? The winter protocol expands beds temporarily. Will the vulnerable people who are thrust into another crisis participate in a program run by the very people who disrupted their community? In all of these sweeps, people not only lose the places where they were living, but they've had their communities disrupted and their possessions trashed. These sweeps push people deeper into isolation. Their trust in engaging with services dwindles. They move farther from life-saving access to aid and care networks. This makes an already challenging job even more difficult for service providers as they work to match folks with the resources they need. For an individual to be faced with a fine or a punitive measure on top of it, these disruptions are deadly to a crisis, a person in crisis. And the vast majority of people whose encampments were swept are still living outside as the resources the city claimed to be offering were either inaccessible or nonexistent. These attacks on our unhoused neighbors make us, make all of us more insecure, more afraid for our own precarious housing situations, and less likely to speak up and demand the things that we all deserve. That is the city council's goal. Unhoused people, renters, workers, and residents throughout this city don't deserve to live in that fear. It's not the needy who are a problem in this world, it is the greedy. Thank you.
Uh, I am Oksana Zorkina. Um, I am 22. I live at 91 Pawtucket Street, which, if you're familiar with, uh, familiar with UML, is actually a dorm building. I work at a Starbucks in Tewksbury, and I'm getting a second job as a research assistant on top of being a full-time student at UMass Lowell. I came to Lowell in 2021 as a queer person attempting to escape an abusive, transphobic, and ableist household. I, like many others I know, used college as a shaky way to escape a bad situation, and it's barely sustainable. I agree with my fellow opposers of the ordinance 222 that simply shuffling the problem somewhere else will only exacerbate it, and that the only real sustainable solution is improving and funding our public resources. I, as a minimum, as a minimum wage worker, am happy to pay more in taxes if it means that we end up with an actually safer community. I also wanted to speak on the fact that the way that our unhoused population is treated as a nuisance and not a humanitarian crisis made me, as somebody who has potential, has uh, almost faced homelessness, makes me feel unsafe and scared. I have friends my age who experienced homelessness, and their stories are horrifying, and the things they had to do to survive are, I, I wouldn't make anybody do that. That's horrible. And to hear my friends and to hear maybe me in a different life and in a slightly less lucky situation be treated like a pest problem makes me feel scared and threatened. I can only imagine how the unhoused of Lowell currently feel when the people in this building continue to strategize ways to violently push them out of our city. How can you legitimately stand here and say you care about people with mental illness when you at the same time want to force them to experience more traumatic homeless sweeps? Our unhoused neighbors of Lowell aren't ugly lawn ornaments to be removed or discarded. They are people who have problems that need to be solved and needs that need to be met just like any of us. So please, listen to the people who are opposing this bill. So many solutions to these problems, even if done poorly, will still improve the lives of our entire community. Thank you.
My name is Adam O'Donnell. I am a resident at 38 Butterfield Street, and since July, I am the owner of A Day of Shame Records located at 250 Jackson Street, known as Mill Number Five. At my, I wanted, I was not here to speak tonight, but having heard all of these words tonight, I wanted to put on record from somebody who is a small-time business owner that I do believe this ordinance would not be in favor of, of any small-time business owner or residents of Lowell. Where I have worked has given me opportunity to get a chance to know many people who have struggled to find housing, because we are close by to the Transitional Living Center. People have used the mill to, as a way to communicate, try to find access for work, try to find access for living, try to be able to navigate the judicial system in order to find out if they're going to have a place to sleep that night. This is, I'm only here just to say that the people who live in Lowell are what make Lowell something that you want to stay in, that you want to grow, that you want to actually benefit the community, and I do not believe that a, a sweeping of, I do not believe that having the unhoused kicked out will be beneficial, as these are people who want to genuinely benefit their lives. This is not something that I believe, as a business owner, people want to see. I have gotten a chance to meet them. They are compassionate. They are caring. They are people that, they are just people at the end of the day. They want a chance to be able to live their lives. And I do not believe this is in our benefit, because it just becomes a cosmetic way to try to fix an issue that is deeper rooted than just simply people are living outside. This is looking bad for Lowell. People will come to Lowell because of the people that live inside of it. And if you remove the, a chance for them to have the ability to better their lives, people will find Lowell to be a community that is exclusionary, that is unwilling to look the other way, that will look the other way instead of having the chance to let people be. I'm sorry, I did not come here with much to say, but my main point is that people that need resources, need resources, but because of the, I do not believe this is in the benefit of business owners. I believe this is just more for the look of a cleaner Lowell rather than the benefit of an actual well-maintained Lowell. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Mike Berger, and I work for Vinfen Lowell. I'm a part of the ACCS. I'm a certified peer specialist, recovery coach, and harm reductionist in the city of Lowell, and I have been for the last nine years. The reason I'm here today, and the reason why I oppose this, and the reason why I'm glad mental health has been brought up, I'm in support of mental health. I am not in support of coercive treatment. I am not in support of dehumanizing people further. I've worked at Tewksbury State Hospital. That place is a prison. That's point one. The reason I am a harm reductionist is because I believe in meeting people where they are at but not leaving them there. In this city, I am fortunate and very privileged to work with a number of people who live on the streets who are unhoused. They're my favorite people to see, regardless of the day that they are in, the day that they are having the challenges presented to them. And I feel for people. I do not want to invalidate people at all, but I'm here to tell you, a big part of my job and a big part of what we must do as a community is be curious, find out about people, actually learn about them. Keeping an open mind. people, actually learn about them, keeping an open mind and honoring self-determination. That is what this is about. This is what my job is about. Without self-determination, what is the point of recovery? If someone is forced into something, regardless of what that could be, what is the point? Unhoused enough. And what I will end with is—if anybody here would like to have a conversation—I am a part of a number of community advisory boards that focus on harm reduction, that focus on recovery—so if you're legit about having a conversation, please reach out to me. Because I want the voice of lived and living experience to be on the table. I want the voice of those people out there on the table. They should be front and center. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Gardett. I'm a board president of Merrimack Valley Project, but I speak to you tonight as a resident of Lowell. I live at 4 Bertram Street in the Highlands, Tyler Park area. The motion before you this evening reveals a collective failure by our community to see those that we label as unhoused as our fellow human beings. Social observers call this phenomenon "othering," creating distance from a group so that we can go about our daily routine without feeling any responsibility. Because they're not like us. Well, they are just like us. They are us. Only, they've had a patch of bad luck. The loss of an affordable apartment perhaps, bearing a mental illness, often untreated, or suffering from the ravages of substance use disorder. We need a humane solution, and we need leadership from this council to bring our city together. Please vote no on this ordinance.
Hi. Thank you for having this at public forum on this very important topic. My name is Claire Mosenfelder. I reside at 240 Jackson Street. I am a business owner of Over the Spoon, also located at Mill Number Five, and I'm the director of operations at Mill Number Five. My comments tonight are my own, mainly because I haven't run them by my boss yet, but I do believe it would be of the spirit that he would support. Regardless, I've read through the proposed ordinance, and my concerns are mainly that the ordinance relies on housing being provided, but we have learned and heard that we simply do not have those resources available. And criminalizing homelessness is not going to assist in anything. And frankly, I could go on and on about the ethical concerns of this ordinance, but I feel like that has been well-covered by plenty of folks here already. Voting yes on this would be a shameful and cruel act. Now, I'm going to come at this from a more practical standpoint, in that as part of my role as director of operations in Mill Number Five, I have to secure the building. And this ordinance, as written, will disrupt people's housing and the shelter that they have in place. And that will leave me in a position where I'm throwing people out of our stairwells, our elevator lobbies, and our doorways far more often than I already do, and that is heartbreaking work. Seeing these vulnerable people and kicking them out into the cold is not anything I ever want to do, but it is unfortunately necessary at times. Voting this through is going to put me and my staff in a position where we have to remove people from our premises as we approach the winter in New England. And we've heard a lot tonight, we've talked a lot, so I'm just going to say, please don't put small business owners in the position of putting the most vulnerable members of our community out in the cold. It is cruel, and a yes vote is shameful. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam George Hutchinson. Wild sometimes, hyphenated. Live at 106 Fox Street and been living here since 2019. This is the first time addressing the council, so first of all, thank you for all your service and your time tonight, and it's been lengthy. And we're going to come up with a solution for this. As John Lennon said, there's no problems, there's only solutions. Really, I come up here, I'm not really for it or against this, because this is not camping, okay? Who likes to go camping, you know? Camping is hanging out with your family and friends like our fellow friend that we lost, Nathan. Camping and talking around a campfire, you know, with a charcoal grill and everything like that, okay? We have a lot of laws here and a lot of signs. Everybody knows—remember the song, "Sign, sign, sign, everywhere a sign, do this, don't do that, the sign." We have a sign against—our laws against panhandling. There's pan hunters on every corner. There's no enforcement. These are people that are just simply not camping, okay? From what I've gathered, listening to you all tonight, both sides, okay? These are simply people that are unhoused and living outside, some with mental issues, some not. Some are going to work in the morning. I had a friend—he—some of you know him on the council here, I'm not going to mention his name, but he is an artist, actor, poet, and author. He was displaced, he was living in a home, and they stopped paying the rent because the owner died. They didn't know it, they just were living for free for a long time. Hey, we're getting a free ride. And they spent all their money over time, they had no savings, the next thing you know, they're displaced. So what we have to do is, before we just remove these people, is maybe, you know, not wait for the federal assistance, but come up with our own local work program assistance where we can get some of these people that are mentally healthy and we can get them working, you know, cleaning—like cleaning up the trash on the side of the highway that the state doesn't pick up. So that's all I really have to say. I think we could just come down to this, but I would like for you not to pass this, yes or no? I'd like you to table it, reconsider it, because of the Ps. And of course, just in closing, I'd like to say that this is 222, right? This is Bill—whatever it is, 222? That's an angel number. The 222 is the number—the master builder. What we need to do is not focus on negativity, but focus on positivity and work together on this solution. Amen.
Hi, my name's Joseph Melia. I live at 763 Merrimack Street, right down the road. I just wanted to challenge anyone on the council to spend a night out in the cold with a tent, let alone without. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Dan Bezarian. I live on Bridge Street in Centerville, and I'm a proudly unionized worker here in the city of Lowell, although—thank you. Although I'm speaking tonight in my capacity as a private citizen, I just wanted to say that one of the things that we hear a lot about folks who come up here speaking in opposition to ordinances like this one is that we don't know the unhoused people that we are advocating for, and I just wanted to say that I do. A number of my unhoused neighbors I have gone to the grocery store with, I have taken them to see their caseworkers at various agencies because many of these people are seeking help. I've taken them to medical appointments, and I've kept track of their medical appointments because it's very, very difficult to keep your life organized when achieving the bare means of subsistence takes up a really inordinate amount of time. And I think as a number of the other speakers here have pointed to, when you are so tenuously connected to so many of the systems of support that we take for granted, whether that's where you get your food or your clothing, shelter, doctor's appointments, all that stuff, when you are so tenuously connected to that, even what seems to us like a very small disruption can have outsized impacts. For instance, an arrest under an ordinance like this where you are taken in and dropped off somewhere you might not be familiar with, you don't know what time it is, you might not have the means to contact somebody who has been helping you, people can die. And I know people who have died. And I would just ask that in whatever discussion happens after the public hearing is done, that those stakes are kept in mind, that what we're really talking about here is people's lives and people's ability to stay alive more than anything else. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Byron McNeil. I live on 11 Faith Street in Lowell. Before I go into the meat and potatoes, I grew up in North Carolina, and a lot of the sentiments that were brought up by the opposition were values that were instilled into me. And I hear from the opposition a lot of talk that is similar to the bootstrap rhetoric from where I was growing up, when I was growing up, that all you have to do is work harder, that all you have to do is push yourself to the bone. And these people that are at the risk of losing their homes, their tent cities, these are people that have tried and failed to pull themselves up by the bootstraps. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The cruelest thing you can ask a man to do with no shoes is to pull himself up by the boot strap." And again, pushing this ordinance is just going to be taking more shoes and not just getting rid of them, burning them, putting them in wood chippers, turning it into mulch. The French have a term called nobilis oblige, and my French is kind of rusty, but I believe that rounds up to, if you have the means to help those in need, you should. And isn't that one of the tenets of our country? We're supposed to be stewards, stewards to those in need, but we see it time and time again in Capitol Hill, even in our own government. We treat stewardship like it's a sign of weakness. And passing this ordinance is just going to be another instance of that. I have been in situations where I've had to sleep on floors just to get by. Even right now, I had to leave my apartment a couple of years ago to stay with my mother. I'm not doing well, and it's by the grace of God that I am able to do this. Not everyone has their parent, not everyone has someone to support them. So I'm asking you to reconsider. A couple of my close friends who have been in this situation spoke here earlier, and if that's not enough to elicit a reconsideration of some of your stances, I don't know what will. Take care.
Hi, my name is Larissa Gaius. I live at 116 Nesmith Street. I'm also a faculty member in the Psychology Department at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, and I just want to reemphasize some of the things that people have said that really take the trauma-informed and psychological lens to this. Housing insecurity is often—not always—but often both caused by traumatic events and is also a form of trauma. And very similarly, arresting people and clearing encampments is a nut—will and is another form of trauma, and it's not just a form of trauma at the individual level. It can have intergenerational consequences, and it can also have community-wide consequences. So I really just want to, again, reinforce kind of some of the stories that people have told from the psychosocial and systematic lens that we should not be, as a city, enforcing and voting for another form of trauma for our communities. Thank you.
I'm speaking as a follow-up to when I came here two weeks ago to talk about some of issues—
Just name your address, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joan Beeson, 121 One Worth Avenue. So I've lived in Lowell for over 30 years and raised seven children here who've gone to the public schools and participated in many of the charitable activities that we talk about in this meeting. And first of all, I would like to thank all the city council members because after some of the comments, I'm a little bit dismayed at people making assumptions that they are not applying compassion, and I really understand that you are. And we have, as people who have lived in Lowell for a long time, dealt with these problems over and over again and have really tried to find solutions that are compassionate. So thank you for that. And anybody who has excorciated you, I apologize for because I don't think that it is true about the thoughtfulness that has been brought to this. And I have spoken with many of you over a period of time because we are struggling with—in my family, small business owners who have endured violence, you know, we've heard from other business owners here too, who are really trying to work with it. And I'm sure that all of you have spoken with many homeless people. My son, in trying to keep a business going, has compassionately spoken to many homeless people. But this is a multi-layered problem. This is not just homelessness. This is a big crisis of addiction, okay, which we've just lightly touched upon, and therein lies the biggest part of this problem, okay? And the other piece is, when we talk about other towns dropping their people off, something I addressed the last time, which I feel very passionate about, because I think Lowell has, despite what people will admit, has a really bad reputation in Massachusetts. And it's one of the reasons why I have continued to stay here because I believe in this community very much. I believe in its ability to find good solutions, to work together. But this is counterproductive, in my mind. Pointing fingers at people, telling them they're not doing their jobs, that really bothers me because I know that these people have tried very hard and have lived here and tried to find solutions. So I do really like the idea of tabling it because, as I said at the beginning, this is my follow-up appearance after my son endured three violent things two weeks ago, over two weeks ago, ended up with a hypodermic needle in his arm accidentally putting out the trash that fell off the trash. And, you know, I want to believe that my son is going to not lose his business, which he's on the brink of at this point because of what's happened in the neighborhood, which is not just homelessness, it's addiction, okay? And in terms of the neighboring towns dropping off their people, this is true, okay? And this is not homeless people. This is an addiction problem, and they have said very clearly, we don't have services. They don't have services because they don't want to have services. And my solution is have them join forces with us in accountability. Lowell cannot shoulder this responsibility alone. If we have other towns dropping people off, they have to be part of the solution. That is the solution. It's not to point the finger at our city council people and say, you're not doing enough. The state is doing absolutely nothing to help this. Nothing, okay? And so we—and they have gone to the state, we've gone to Lori Trahan, Ed Kennedy, all of these people, they turned a blind eye because, you know what? Lowell is a good scapegoat. And until we start demanding accountability of everybody who is part of this problem, it's going to continue the same way. And we're going to stand here in this city council meeting and say to the people here, you're not doing enough, or we're not doing enough. I've been working with this problem for a long time. My family is invested in this problem. We have all tried to do our part. So instead of us pointing the finger at anyone else, let's say, let's all take accountability for it. Let's tell the surrounding towns, take accountability. Let's go after the CVSs who have aided the addiction problem and make them accountable and not let them trickle money in, okay? We need to get other people to hold accountable. And I challenge all of you who have spoken about this so eloquently to actually be part of this solution and not point the finger at other people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that closes the, those, oh, you're good, sir.
Hello, my name is Nick Wistuber. I live at 304 Pot Dogged Street. I'm going to keep it short, because a lot of people have talked tonight. But I did want to bring some light on an issue that I felt was under-discussed in our discussion of the homeless crisis in Lowell. And it's the fact that we are currently experiencing, as a globe, a climate crisis, which, it affects many places, but in, in a, in a way that impacts us specifically. Not only does it make different places around the world warmer, it also increases the chances of life-threatening cold snaps, because when there are unseasonably warm temperatures in places that shouldn't have them, arctic winds and temperatures come down from those places and end up in places like this. I don't know how many of you guys remember the big cold snap from like, two years ago, where the wind chill hit like, negative 30 overnight. In my apartment, it was pretty poorly insulated. It hit about like, single digits in my room. I was, I mean, I was, I was lucky to have a wind, I mean, a wall between me and the wind. There are many people who live outside that don't have that. I don't know how they got through that. I don't know what I would have done if I was in that situation. And I think that this is something that we need to underline, is that these situations are only going to get worse as the climate crisis worsens. And, I mean, with that in mind, I don't know how can, I don't know how we can vote for just penalizing people living out on the street when they already have to experience conditions like this. Thank you for letting me speak.
That will close the portion of the meeting for those in opposition. And before we go to the council, just wanted to thank all speakers for showing the respect and following the rules of a public hearing. It's made for a much better discussion back and forth, so I thank you all for that. Sure, every council wants to speak, so what I'll do is I'll start with the most senior and work our way. That way, if you don't want to speak, you just wave me off and we'll get you back at the end. So it's now Councilor Mercier.
I wasn't going to speak, but I will. And I, I think people have a right to their opinion. People have different views than others. I don't want to see people outside suffering, but the fact remains that they're there, and I'm sorry for it. I don't even know why they would want to be there, but I think there's a lot of people mentally ill or on drugs, and that's, and nobody seems to want them, so they're out there, and it's very sad to see that. But there are those that want us to have compassion and don't do that, but yet they get up to the microphone and they say, "Well, I'm in this building, Mill Number Five, and we secure the place, but still people are sleeping in the hallways. We have to lock the doors so that we can put them out." We're doing that with the South Common, and yet, it's all right for you to put them out. If you have that much compassion, why don't you open up Mill Number Five and let them all come on in and stay out of the... Well, see, see, see.
Hey, hey, listen up.
See, I never did that to you. I did not do that to you. I don't understand. That's the difference between you and I. I would not do that to you. You have a right to your opinion.
Hey, listen. Nobody interrupted any speaker that was here. Don't counsel interrupt anybody. Don't do that to us.
I didn't interrupt you when you got up there to speak. And I don't expect you to do that to me, because I think you should respect each other, that's all. And I respect your opinion. And I think that maybe we could come together and try to figure out a solution, because it doesn't seem like the federal and the state are going to help us with money. And maybe we need to petition the people that have the money to put together a facility so we can get the people off the street and put them in there. But my, I have an obligation as a city councillor to protect residents in the city, so that...
Listen to the voice of the people that just spoke.
Hey, you can get out of here. Take off. See you later.
There you go. And stop taking pictures of people. That's why I took one of you.
Go ahead.
I did. See, this is what life is all about. You respect people, but they don't respect you. But that's okay. I can handle it. Or I wouldn't be here for 29 years if I couldn't, couldn't take it. But the fact remains that I have an obligation to protect residents in this city. They have a right to be protected from people that are running after them, chasing them for money, so that they can go out and buy drugs, or sex, whatever they want to do. I know you don't want to hear that. Not everybody that's on the street is, is, is the working poor. These are the people I want to help, because they're trying to help themselves. But I just want to reiterate my feelings. Your rights end when they violate mine. Your rights end when they violate the people that I represent, sitting at this seat, that are trying to earn a living, try to run a business. And they can't run a business, just like the woman wants to get them out of Mill Number Five. So too should they not be congregating in a restaurant to have a woman run out in her car and, and hit someone, and almost get killed herself. That's not what life is all about. So I know you don't agree with me. I really don't here. But I have an opinion, and I'm saying it. So you can laugh, do what you want. It's time that we, we are fed up. We're fed up because people are violating other people's rights, and it's not fair. And yes, the South Common, they deserve to be there, but they don't deserve to be selling drugs there. They don't deserve to be doing, having needles all over the place. That's violation of people that want to go there and enjoy the amenities that the South Common, and we spent millions of dollars to promote that. And yet, they're using it to go to the bathroom there, to do needle drugs there, to have sex there. And I've seen it, because I worked across the street for a long, long time, and I've seen it. So you can have your opinion and do what you want. Why don't you take them in yourself? Take them in. Look at the Bible, look at the Bible, and do what you're supposed to do then, if that's what you have. I don't want to say anymore. I think I said enough and pissed a lot of people off. And you know what? I don't really care.
Counsel, ca, ca, ca...
I won't.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all the speakers, those who are for and against this ordinance. We all know, sitting here, and people back home too, that the city have spent so much money and resource, and working closely with some of our partners to address this unhoused population. Of course, there's much more to do. And to do it alone, that's not what we're doing. We work with our partner. We work with our delegations, and the governor's office, and maybe the federals as well, and yes, the federals as well. I heard, like my colleague, the complaint make, particularly around the school, Rogers School, South Common, and low housing authority, the resident that lived there. I feel that we need to do something, particularly when it comes to public safety. The safety of our children, our residents, our business community. I heard tonight that this ordinance is a nuisance, concern, is insumane, not compassion, and so on. I respects, I respectfully disagree. I've read the ordinance. It's carefully written. There's the language that built into the ordinance to ensure that the unhoused will have place to go, and that their personal belonging will be stored 30 days in the police department. I think we're not throwing the unhoused out of the encampment without place for them to go to. I don't think that is lack of compassion. As a council, I'm also responsible for the safety and the well-being of our community as a whole. Therefore, tonight I will vote in support of the ordinance.
Carter Bledger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, like you, I do want to thank the speakers for coming down this evening. I think we gained some very valuable opinions and experiences through this population. And this population does need advocates like yourselves. So thank you for coming down tonight. But, you know, I couldn't help but to recognize the tone by a few as to this council perhaps trying to criminalize, demoralize the unhoused. That could not be more false. Now, this council has put their money where their mouth is. Okay? We've allocated millions, much of it before my time, and I stand behind my colleagues for doing so, towards this issue. But for the speakers, some, not all, to sit here and be critical of the only municipality in the region that's doing anything, that's what I have issue with. Now, I know you're advocating for this population, and it's not illegal to be unhoused. But it is against the law to defecate near a school. We talk about vulnerable populations. Are schoolchildren not a vulnerable population? They most certainly are. For the residents, the South Common, where the children can't come out and play sports in the field because syringes are littering the field. Defecating in public, having sex in public, that's illegal. Businesses, their patrons, being tormented night and day. And it's almost at a daily basis that we are getting complaints. So this is what we face. So I hope the speakers can understand that, opposition, and that we have a right, as Councilor Noon said, to protect them as well. So I'm going to support this tonight. I think this problem has gotten out of control. It's sheer numbers, again, that are coming from the suburbs, by and large, to Lowell, dropped off, bust, given Uber drivers, by all multimodal forms of transportation, they become our problem. But we don't ask for identification. Where'd you come? We do, what do you need? We offer services. Many cases, they don't want it. That's the reality here. We're not kicking them around place to place without offering services, or in many cases, a bed. Again, they don't want it. So what are we to do? We have to take action. And I think that's what this body is going to do tonight. So to the speakers, I have perhaps some advice for you. What I'd like you to do, starting next Tuesday, if you can keep these numbers strong, 20, 30, you all did a great job tonight. Thank you. Starting next week, go to Tewksbury, go to their select meeting. Go to, at the week after, go to Borica. Go to Chemsford, go to Westford, and say Lowell has a few hundred beds for the homeless population, spending millions annually. What are you doing? You'd be doing this population a favor. You'd be doing this council a favor. But again, to be critical, time and time again, you come in here, to the only municipality that's doing anything, I suggest, and I would appreciate, and I would ask, that you take this act to other municipalities and put it right on them, just like you're doing tonight. Put it on them who have, how many beds? Zero, to address homelessness. That's where we can make a start. That's what I would recommend to you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Getia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank a few people. I want to thank the homeless coordinator, Mara Fitzpatrick, for her hard work over this period of time, the Health and Human Service Director, Lisa Golden, Manager Golden, City Solicitor Williams, Assistant City Manager, Michelle O, the Parks Department, the DPW, the Lowell Police Department, and the Lowell Fire Department for their tireless efforts in trying to help. We've talked about services. We've spent millions and millions of dollars while people up here are saying, "Let's tax the billionaires." When you find one in Lowell, please call me, because I'll tax them. I haven't seen one yet. We talk about a lot, we talk about people's human rights. But we forgot, we left out 14, over 14,000 students in the city of Lowell and their families. 14,000 to 300. Where am I going with this? 14,000. And the funny thing is, the UMass Lowell people, I love you. You stood up here and you were the first ones to remove the encampments around you. You remember, right? You were there. It's humorous to me that they run young kids up here from UMass Lowell when they were the first ones to remove the encampments. Remember that, Mr. Mayor? Wow. Boy, have we come a long way to stand up here and tell the residents, "You can't have a clean place, but we can."
Quiet, please.
Right? That's very, that's very interesting. But, you know, I sat back and listened to people talk. And then they come up here and say, "I don't want to be recognized where I work, but here's where I work." Right?
Goodbye. Good night. See you. Thank you very much. Good night.
Right? Here's where I work, but I don't want you to, I don't want you to know where I work. I'm not representing this place, but here's where I am. My job as a city councillor is to represent people, represent school-aged children and their families. One just sent over a text as we were sitting here and said, "You know, my child goes to the STEM Academy, and I don't have, I don't have the right to a bus, because I live too close. I take him to school every day, but my husband is legally blind, and he has to walk home at the end of the day." Can you imagine that? Just look what happened to the three girls leaving the Owl Diner. Can you imagine sending your child into that? Because you don't have the means. And we, I know we all care about people who don't have money, right? Or do we? Wait a minute, they have to send their kids to that school. Anybody with means, remove their kids, and they're gone. Anybody who has means and would never send their wife to work there, or their husband. We talked about the elderly and the housing over there. This is about drugs over there. This is about prostitution. This is about more than what people think. It was first an ordinance for 1,000 feet within the school system, and then our businesses stepped up and said, "People are going to the bathroom in our doorways." Talk about human rights. Can you imagine? Oh, wait a minute. Who's going to pay the bills? Are you guys going to pay the bills when all these businesses go out of business? Oh, wait a minute. Oh, wait, 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 we're going to go to our houses at the beach. I get it. It's insanity.
All right, all right. Listen, listen up, listen. Hey.
It's insanity to think...
One more outburst, I clear the room, and we'll have the conversation ourselves. Listen up.
It's ins-
Listen, listen, listen.
Yes, you're already doing that. You are not taking into account the people here who have spoken. You made up hours. You have already made up your mind when you entered this room, and this is the show we're putting on.
She's not wrong, Mr. Mayor. I made up my mind. I made up my mind a long time ago. No matter what was said tonight, I wasn't changing my mind. I'm not lying to anybody here. You know, when it comes down to you have parents calling you, and someone's dropping their pants and going to the bathroom in the middle of the South Common, we have problems. We talk about the high school. We had one speaker here who spoke over and over again, talking about a guy downtown who has gone to the bathroom and doorways and everything else, Shin and Lally, and they want to build a statue downtown. Are we okay?
He's passed away.
That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. So is the firefighter that we referenced. What about the firefighter we referenced? He was passed away too. You know that, right? But that was okay. I didn't hear you speak up when the firefighter was referenced, did you? Again, again, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to change things, we have to make sure that these students are protected and their families and the businesses in this city. They have a right to their opinions, and I didn't sit here and say one word during the whole thing. Our job is to protect the students. Not one person up here who spoke, spoke about the students in the city. Not one. Not one. Not one talked-
That's it. So listen. One more, just, I'll tell you, I'm going to do it. One more time, clear everybody out. Listen. Come on, man.
No, not one, not one kid, not one person here talked about the Lowell Public Students. Not one. And when we look at this issue, it is heart-wrenching. There's no doubt, as Councilor Noon said. There's no question. Compassion has to go both ways. And when you watch what happened just on Saturday, and that's over and over again, I've been down there. I've walked the South Common. I've taken videos down there. You can absolutely see the needles everywhere and the needle exchange. Who gets the drugs to them? That's the question to me. How do drugs even get down there? I don't know. And the prostitution that's offered to two councillors as they're walking by. You want to have a date? Am I wrong, councillor?
No.
And that's in broad daylight. And these are families trying to walk their kids to schools, so, I mean, we have to do something, and we've been doing it. If we called up the homeless coordinator tonight and asked her to explain all the services we gave, or to the city manager, again, I know, Mr. Manager, they don't believe a word you say. For all those services that we paid for and we did, they mean nothing at this point. $2 million in opera money, the only community in the area who spent that, we spent a heck of a lot more than that. We are the only community in the area. We invited communities in to talk. We pushed for a better community for all of you, but it fell on deaf ears. And now it's time to protect the students of the city and protect the residents and the businesses, and if people don't like that, you know, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to thank everyone that came down and participated because I do feel like this is an important part of this process, this input from the public, from the people who'd be affected by this, the people who've lived these experiences. It's important that we hear that. It's also important, we recognize, as speakers have said, that none of us are immune to this kind of situation. We could all find ourselves living outside. Doesn't take much for any of us. I did have some questions about the ordinance that hopefully the solicitor can, can help me understand. The ordinance talks about it being in effect when there is shelter available, shelter space available. We've often found ourselves in a situation where LTLC is full for men, but there are female beds available. With the language in this ordinance, my question is, what happens then? Are men allowed to camp and women are not? Or how would that be interpreted? Maybe, Mr. Solicitor, you might be able to answer that for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think in that scenario, if there were only beds available for women, men, whatever the situation might be, you would just tally it like any other situation, however many beds are available that can be provided. If no beds can be provided for that individual, then they, you know, the camping ban would not apply to them in that scenario, if there's no bed to put them in.
So it'd be on an individual basis. That's, that's good to understand, and I think that that's probably the best answer to that question. The ordinance also talks about the storage of valuable personal belongings. I guess my question is, who decides what has value? To me, you know, I don't know what's valuable to any person that might be sleeping outside. I don't know if a particular document is important, if a particular piece of tarp might be important for whatever reason. Who's making these decisions, and is there wiggle room, I guess? Who's interpreting that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it would be the team that is responding. It could be the police department. It could be whoever else from the city department is there. Ideally, you'd be able to work with the individual to identify what would be considered, you know, and some of it's going to be obvious and some of it might not be, what would be considered a personal item. Unfortunately, this is a human process, and there is going to be some subjectivity that goes into all of this, where judgment, decisions are going to have to be made, and that's, that's just the nature of it. But I would like to thank that the people who are responding that are in these situations, they're trained to do so, and they should be able to use their best judgment in situations like that.
Okay. Thank you. One question I had was, was the Hunger Homeless Commission consulted, and this is probably better for the manager, were they involved in the development of this ordinance? Did they see it? Did they offer any comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Counselor, what we did through the Law Department, as well as took the lead from this council, we went out to Boston and we pulled all of the ordinances forward, and I believe we did a better job than, than most, most other cities that have already been moving forward on this.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate that. I did spend some time this weekend looking at the various ordinances from Fall River, from Brockton, from Salem, and many more communities that have already either passed it or are considering it, much at the same stage we are at this point. And I do think that our ordinance is more humane than most of them, has some significant improvements in safeguards around the treatment of the individuals. But I don't know that it's, I don't know how effective this ordinance is going to be. And the reason I say that, a lot of this discussion is centered around South Common and the situation at South Common. Right now, there's a sign at South Common that says, "The park is closed one hour before sunset until one hour after sunrise." We have another ordinance that says that no structures can be constructed on parks without the approval of the Board of Parks or any other public land. So I guess my question is, what is this ordinance doing specifically at South Common that isn't already being covered by those ordinances? And it's, it's something that my colleague, Counselor Mercer, has said many times. We can pass all the ordinances we want, but if we can't enforce them, they don't matter. And I guess, I feel like this ordinance is in a situation where I don't know that we can, will, honestly should enforce something like this. I have a lot of questions about how this is going to work. Unfortunately, I think that we are too new to having these ordinances in other communities to be able to look and understand the long-term impacts on the community and on the population affected. I also don't think that any of the problems that we're talking about, that this community is facing at South Common or anywhere else, the drugs, the public health issues, the prostitution, et cetera, et cetera, are a product necessarily of camping. They're a product of people. They're a product of the situation. And yes, I fully, fully understand the struggles of the businesses, the struggles of the residents, the struggles of the kids going to school. I just don't think this ordinance is going to fix anything.
I know it.
I'm really stuck on this. And, Mr. Manager, Mr. Solicitor, this is not any indication of the work you've done or the ordinance you've put together. I think you've done the best you possibly could here to create a camping ban ordinance. I just don't see how this helps anything. I think I'm probably on an island here, but I'm going to make a motion to refer this back to the manager for further study and to report back to us on what we should do
Motion by Counselor Janess. Send it back to the manager. Is there a second? No second. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I mean, it's funny when you see, first, first and foremost, I thank all the speakers tonight. I mean, the conversation has to happen. It's, the first step, they say, in correcting a problem is identifying you have a problem. We're all well aware there's a problem. It's funny to see, though, that influence of the same advocates can change a stance. We all asked, this was a unanimous decision for the creation of this ordinance. We all asked for it. Now, I don't understand what this is going to do. Shouldn't I ask for it, for one. A big portion, no one's really touched on. It is the purpose of this ordinance to promote public health, public safety, general welfare, and the economic health and well-being of Lowell, our city. This is for the workers, the visitors, the students, the residents, including individuals experiencing homelessness by prohibiting unsanctioned camping in the dangerous and unsafe conditions surrounding such campsites. I hear that these are just people, these are just our neighbors. This is not godly. This is not what it says in the Bible. I can speak on facts. We had encampments over in Sunville. The crime stats skyrocketed for the four months that that encampment was in place. And, and again, why these people were camping, that's a plethora of issues that go on, breaks in the service chains, a million things led to that. But it's not okay to repeatedly have to tell those that aren't facing these hardships why their cars are constantly being broken into to feed drug habits in some instances, why they're losing all of their propane tanks, the endless petty crimes that go along with this. Again, the dangerous and unsafe conditions surrounding campsites. This ordinance seeks to improve access to housing and recovery services by restoring access to the public space, the public right-of-way and curtailing the existence of campsites that shield drug trafficking, human trafficking, weapons, fire hazards, violence, and other criminal activity that create conditions for large crowds to congregate. Isn't that what the majority of the speakers that were at the podium tonight were advocating for? Improving access to housing and recovery services? There's portions that are going to help with that. Again, I've heard so many allegations, and a common theme is, this ordinance or this council or this administration is being inhumane in making attacks on the unhoused. The only time the unhoused are even mentioned in this ordinance is in what I just read to you, in the part where it specifically spells out that this is aimed at the health and well-being of Lowell, including those experiencing homelessness. I don't get where the attacks on the unhoused and, and tax your billionaires and all of these other speaking points, which sound great, and you'll probably video and you'll see it all over Instagram or whatever, saying, "I did something." But if you really want to do something when a colleague pointed you in red direction. We have state rep that many of these people that are speaking are very familiar with. An office space in this district that represents where this problem is ground zero. How many have had conversations and booked FaceTime with that? How did that work out for you? I see you here advocating at our podium with no state checks that came in. So for you to turn around and point fingers when we have repeatedly exhausted every avenue possible, and what this ordinance is carving out, acceptable usage and shared public green space. Maybe it's okay with you skipping by at 25 miles an hour in your vehicle. You don't really see the 25 needles around the tree. But when kids want to go play in the park, how many families are going to volunteer to bring their children to the South Common to go sledding once we get out for a snowfall? I'm sure that'll be packed. I'm sure South Common will be a hotspot for families to enjoy in the winter months. I've heard conversations from people saying they practice harm reduction. Have they ever really dug in and looked at the unintended consequences of harm reduction? Because you want to talk about attacks? As a result of harm reduction, we are attacking the public by the refuge that's left. Didn't somebody say that I practice harm reduction and we don't leave, we meet people where they're at, but we're not leaving them there? Well, last I checked, they're handing out 20, 30 needles at a time, and those people are still there. And guess what? Those 20 or 30 used syringes are also there with them. And when they go two blocks over to score whatever drug they're putting in that syringe because, last time I checked, we're not handing out syringes just for people with diabetes to check or people to check insulin. This is illicit drug use running rampant in public space in broad daylight. And so it's a balancing act. I'm not sitting here saying that the state, the federal, the city of Lowell, there's plenty of services available, but there are resources and services available. So to sit up here and act like, "Oh, we can do more, we can do more, we can do more." We can do more, but we also have to do more for the public that's not unhoused. We have to do more for the public. That's not okay with sticking a needle in their arm, nodding off and leaving that syringe in the space that they call home. That is not okay. We're talking about accepted usage and shared public green space. I haven't heard one of my colleagues attack anybody for the simple sake of being unhoused. I haven't heard one of my colleagues attack anybody for the simple sake of potentially experiencing homelessness. That's not even a conversation that's ever been had on this council floor, at least on this side of the railing. And so for people to turn around and just point fingers, why do people hesitate and laugh when we encourage you to go to the surrounding communities? Lowell's land poor. As all you students from U Lowell know, you've been around the city. There's not a ton of free space available. Look around surrounding communities. Some communities have a two-acre minimum build rule. I don't see advocacy over there to improve any kind of services to assist, not even replace what we're doing, just to assist. If the numbers have grown from 130 to 300 of what was mentioned by another speaker, we're land poor. How come we're not getting any assistance from surrounding communities? Are people dropping people off in the dark of night and then they become Lowellians at that point? Not necessarily, because when people get dropped off down here, you know what that means? And it's not an us-versus-them mentality, but the reality is, if you've been unhoused in our city for quite some time, where you hit that bad spell, where you became unhoused, by them dropping off non-Lol residents, I'm sorry, but when you show up at the LTLC looking for a room on that, during that cold snap, there's no beds available because we have been the epicenter for social services for quite some time. The bad signal has been sent up, and the more that we do, the more is going to come. And so there is a balancing act. We have 115,000 residents that we have to find that balance and provide the resources and services that everybody needs and desires, and we have to make it as safe as possible. So we might have to agree to disagree, but please stop coming up to the podium. If you really want to be part of the solution, work with us, not against us, and start going out advocating on a state level. Go to Beacon Hill and all these other places. I hear giggling and laughing, but you know what you did? We sat here and listened to your pleas, concerns, and cries without even understanding the full scope of what we've been up against here. How many of our residents have you spoken to? You don't feel the calls we do. You don't see the byproduct of turning a blind eye to what some advocates say is the humane way. The only thing that's humane by doing that, you're basically turning a blind eye and assisting in self-suicide, self-harm. Even though you call it harm reduction, handing a blanket and a plate of food to somebody when they turn around and shoot fentanyl on their body while you go home and feel good because you helped them get by that night, I'm not sure how much harm you're reducing there. But if it wasn't for Nakian, I think we'd be in a world of trouble. So I will definitely support this motion, and I thank this administration for all the efforts they've been doing. I thank the advocates, and if the advocates want to really get together and start advocating on a state level at Beacon Hill amongst all these other people, it's desperately needed. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot has already been said, but I will say, I think that the ordinance is well-written. I think there's protections in place, that we will only be enforcing it when there's a period of shelter available. I've heard people come up here and they've mentioned shameful, cruel, inhumane, not compassionate. What I find to be not compassionate is thinking that it's okay for people to sleep outside in a tent in the middle of February, March in New England. I think that's really incompassionate. I have gone out to homeless camps in the city. I've seen people with burn barrels underneath tents, underneath tarps, with their clothing burnt to their legs because they're trying to keep warm in the month of February. We've handed out socks, we've handed out blankets. I think that's cruel. If it was my child, this is where I come from, I have friends, children that are in the city right now, homeless and addicted, I would want them to be brought to shelter if it's available. I would not want them to be left outside. I don't want people giving them propane tanks. I don't want them giving them five-gallon peels to defecate in. I want them- I want them to get services that they need, and I don't think that you're helping do that at all. Thank you.
Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll stand on my comments I made on Counsel Belanger's motion. Thank you.
My comments have been well-known for a long time now. Motion by Counsel Mercier to adopt, seconded by Counsel Noon. Mr. Clark, roll call.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
No.
Moving on, we have another public hearing. We'll take a minute to clear the room, then we'll come back to the agenda. All right, 4.3, you have an ordinance to amend, Chapter 227, motion to detective lighting. Eric, we're good. Counsel, we're good, we're good. You have a public hearing. We'll start the meeting off, all in favor? In favor? In favor? Portion meeting is closed. Also, opposition? Opposition? Opposition, that portion of the meeting is closed. Motion to adopt by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counsel Mercier.
Would it be possible, and I'm only asking the question, to bundle all the motion responses?
I was going to ask, instead of going through all of them, if anybody has a question on motion response?
There it is.
Right.
That's it.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Dakota.
Mr. Mayor, the only quick question I would have on the motion responses, would it make sense to bundle any of the ones regarding the traffic common and refer them to a subcommittee?
Sure, Mr. Altman would love that idea. Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No.
Yeah, so we have motions, what is A through G, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Okay. We do have a 60-day trial on for G tonight. Do you want to take that?
Okay, so then...
Yeah. So are you okay with G? I know there was a problem before.
And you can put H and I in there, too.
Oh, wait, do we have a registered speaker?
We do, but I don't see her in the building.
On Zoom.
No.
Nope. Okay. So I'm fine with that.
Okay. Sure, yeah, 60 days, so I'll come back to it if it doesn't work out. All right, so we're going to do A through I. Is that what we're doing? Counsel Scott, is that what you said?
Hold on one second. Actually, it'll be through J.
A through J to a presentation, subcommittee.
Yes, please.
Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Scott. K, motion response, Restrooms in City Hall. Counsel Gitchia, any questions? Restrooms in City Hall, your motion response. You good? Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to the manager, the one downstairs looks amazing. Thank you.
Awesome, yeah. And then just, I just have a quick question about R. Any update on where it is? Mr. Manager? Does 6 million follow your L.A. law?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Threw you to the council. That has been sent, and it's still waiting for it to come out of the body in a final version. Hasn't been, the final vote has not been taken.
Has it gone through, the House started taking care of it, the Senate?
House has taken care of it, we're still waiting on it to be finally voted on. It's being held up with two other items.
All right, so, great, great. So we have...
Mr. Mayor, just on cue, obviously, all the councils are welcome. Riley School, 10 o'clock this Saturday, concerning Andover Street.
Counsel Gitchia.
Mr. Mayor, is there a way that the manager can try to get notification to the abutists to that project? Somehow? Can somebody just walk and drop something in the door? Or have they already?
Counsel Belanger says he's blanketed all ability. I don't know. I watched him.
Mr. Mayor, three to the council. I believe that Counsel Belanger was knocking and walking.
Thank you.
To let everybody know. But if there's anything else we can do, step it up on the process of our social media, et cetera, we could gladly do that. Mr. Rogers, as far as stepping it up on our social media to make sure that everybody knows about it?
Yes, please, because I did receive a call over the weekend about more public outreach, so that would be great. Thank you.
So 6-2, you already took care of the FY...
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Counsel Robinson.
Just last one on T, refuge barrels. I'm glad and I'm pumped to see that that's an ongoing thing. Do you think that'd be better served through you to the manager? Would that be better served, kind of you taking it back to see if, because I know you gave the prices and everything, and you said, "Case is currently explored, and grant opportunities, kind of a funding stream for that." So would it make sense to take that back, and once they can identify a funding stream, maybe coming back?
Good.
Okay, if you don't mind, thank you.
Great. 6-2, you already took care of the FY25 hearing presentation. Is the City Hall traffic calming attachment, is that going to the traffic subcommittee as well? Or you want to talk about it now? Mr. Manager, up to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Threw to the council. As far as the City Hall traffic calming, that's the attachment that we've been working on. Former Counsel Alehi, I think this was his, one of his pet projects, along with many of the other councilors here, but that is what we've come up with, with LRTA. I believe that that'd be the case. So that's for your edification as to where we're going to be moving in that area, if that is acceptable to the council.
Motion response, water rescue equipment. Saw a chief somewhere. There he is. Mr. Manager?
Once again, council is the water rescue equipment. This is something that we're obviously going to continue, and I want to thank the chief and his team for putting that together. This is another opportunity where we're attacking the situation. Chief has been great at attacking this from grant perspective, obviously ARPA monies and some of our own cash, but this is, once again, given the number of calls that we do unfortunately get that involve water rescues, I think it's a good idea that this is a real victory for our Lowell Fire Department, as well as this council, moving this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Belanger. Okay. 6-3, you already took care of, 6th floor's communication from the city manager to request out-of-state travel. This is for the city council and the city manager and DPD, Assistant City Manager. Motion to adopt by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Gitchia. Roll call.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Counsel Dakota. Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could please bundle, suspend the rules to bundle 7.1 to 7.4.
By Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Noon. All in favor, say aye. opposed, motion passes. 7.1, vote to accept, expend $21,301 literacy volunteers a mask grant. 7.2, accept and expend $39,600 EMPG grant. 7.3, vote to rescind special speed regulation, 6060. And 7.4, adopt mask enrollment law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c).
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask you to...
So we do, right now, we do 7.1 and 7.3. Motion to adopt by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Janess. Roll call.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
7.4, just needs a motion to refer a public hearing, November 26, 24, by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counselor Gitchia. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Eight orders from the city manager. We have a 60-day trial to waive the full reading and second reading by title. Motion to adopt by Counsel Scott, seconded by Counsel Robinson. Roll call.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Nine, ordinance from the city manager. Nine-one, establish affordable housing trust fund. We need a motion to refer a public hearing, November 26, 24, by Counsel Dakota, seconded by Counsel Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ten, the anxiously awaited nonprofit organization subcommittee report. Next week, Counsel Gitchia, you got it. All right, the motion to accept a report, I'm sorry, one more time. Ten-two, economic downtown development subcommittee from November 12...
We can do that next week, too.
Next week as well?
Four-four.
You got it. Motion to accept those reports of progress. Eleven petitions for Selenius Jeremy Felix Caban, request reimbursement for towing. Motion to refer a law enforcement for report recommendation by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Eleven-two, Thomas Cludia, for the benefit of Severn Chat, request installation of a handicapped park sign on 110 Bran Street, Unit 3. Motion to refer a traffic engineer by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Twelve announcements, any at all?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier, you ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, we're going to have the senior citizen subcommittee meeting at the Senior Center to talk about senior issues. We're going to really discuss.